Okay, it's 7:10. We're uncertain if the mayor is going to come this evening, so we'll just start the meeting anyway, and if he shows up, you can step right in. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 7:10 on June 6th, 2017. The first order of business will be a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in indivisible liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please. President.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Arman?
Yeah.
Councilor Candelora?
Here.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Manna?
Here.
Councilor Miller?
Here.
Councilor Rose?
Here.
All right, the next order, excuse me, the next order of business, we have the minutes of the meeting of May 16? May 16?
Yes.
So moved.
June 6th, May 16, 2017.
Second with one correction on page two, under police commission, second paragraph. It's at the intersection of Route 80 and West Pond Road, not Twin Lakes.
Any further corrections?
Yeah, I had page 14, there was a motion that the roll call vote said that Joe was absent.
He had stepped out of the room.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, he wasn't here during the motion.
Very good.
Yeah, I did step out for a few minutes during the meeting, so that's undoubtedly correct. Any further corrections or comments? Roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Foreman?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Anna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
All right, we'll go to the Water Pollution Control Authority agenda. First item of business is correspondence and citizen statements. Anyone? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. There is no unfinished business for the Water Pollution Control Authority. New business, request to connect to sanitary sewers 1565 Middletown Avenue, map 67, lot 85, White Hollow Middletown Avenue sanitary sewer extension.
Good evening. This item appeared before the WPCA back in January on a preliminary basis. This potential connection would be served by the White Hollow Middletown Avenue sewer facilities that were constructed in the early 1990s to handle problems in the White Hollow Middletown Avenue area. And as part of that, DEP put some restrictions on the sewer line and connections to the sewer line. And the town, the WPCA adopted an ordinance setting forth restrictions on who could connect to that line down Middletown Avenue from the White Hollow area to the center of Norfolk. Restrictions on who could connect and under what conditions they could connect. And there's pretty much four conditions. One, they have to, there has to be an existing building on the lot at the time that the sewers were put in. This property, 1565 Middletown Avenue, the old Mill Pond Tavern, there's a building on it. East Shore has to make its determination that there's, it's not feasible to make a repair on site. And there is a letter attached in the packet from the director of East Shore, basically to that effect. And then, the other one is that DEP, the connection of the property, DEP authorizes it, okays it, and it doesn't impact our grant loan agreement for construction of the White Hollow Middletown Avenue project. Because in that original grant loan agreement, there were restrictions on who could connect in and under what conditions. And it tied back to our ordinance. I forwarded up to DEP, we got something back in March, and I think I forwarded to you early on, but it's in the packet here as well. Basically, DEP is saying, pretty much, they're out of it at this point. The loan has been paid off, it was a 20-year loan, the grant received the money, and they basically said it's our issue, and it no longer involved in terms of monitoring it or weighing in on it. And then the other item really is that the flows from any facility can't, I mean, there has to be capacity for it, can't adversely impact the capacity in the system. And just to give you a little history, when this whole project was done back in the early 1990s, there was some excess capacity in the line down Middletown Avenue, which is a 10-inch line that goes into the center of Norfolk, the Mansfield Drive pump station. That was reserved for existing properties along Middletown Avenue, some for the Norfolk Center and the like. And we reserved that deliberately, it was not there for any new development, because new development can create a significant flow that wasn't anticipated. I haven't run the numbers, because there's a lot involved to it, but again, the preliminary numbers that were projected for flows from the site were about 3,000 gallons per day thereabouts, which shouldn't be having any impact on the overall 10-inch line that goes down Middletown Avenue or the potential for future homes to connect on Middletown Avenue if their systems fail. I mean, not future homes, but future connections from existing homes. Where we do have restrictions in terms of flow, based upon the line in Middletown Avenue, the pumping station has limitations, and then the line that we, where we discharge into North Haven, we have a restriction in terms of the size of that line there, and we have an agreement with North Haven, we bought capacity from them. So, there's a lot of restrictions on it, but the bottom line is, for the projected flows, I don't see an issue. Andy Bazuto is here to talk about some of his thoughts for revitalization of the old Mill Pond Tavern. And there's some issues that we might want to run by the town attorney in terms of, if he wants to put an addition on, does that, is that allowable by the ordinance? I'd like to get clarification from Pat on that. And Andy's even talking about potentially another building on the site, the same property, but on the site. So this is, the issues are what capacity is available and compliance with the ordinance. So, really at this point, I'm trying to throw these ideas out there. I'd like Andy just to sort of give you an overview of what his plans are, or thoughts are at this point. And then, if there's any questions or issues that come up, we can deal with them, you know, one way or the other, in terms of maybe a legal question, it may be a flow question, maybe a policy issue. But again, I'd just like to keep you posted in terms of, Andy, give you a rundown of what his thoughts are, and we can go from there.
I've got a question for you before we hear from Andy. So, when I read this, so it says, you have an estimated daily flows of 3,800 gallons, so that's for the Mill Pond Tavern, and so are you using it as a restaurant, as a, how did you come up with that?
Looking at the restaurant type of use.
So then, if we read on, it says that equates to 15 homes.
Yep.
Then we keep reading on, and it says that there was an additional 65 homes identified that we sized this for. How much more did we go than those 65 homes?
How much more capacity?
Right, in other words, we're not taking, if we do this, we're not taking, we're not down to only 50 of the 65 homes can tie in.
No.
So, how much, how much more, you know, that's the thing, I guess, I guess, and you have to do a lot of work and a lot of math.
Right, and I haven't done all-
We don't want to take away from the homes in the identified area.
Right, we want to make sure there's the capacity for them in the future, if they ever need it. We don't want to take away from that. There's a few other things, I'm just-
And then the other question is, is that property on a well?
That's on a well.
So, how would you bill something that's gonna use that much for sewer user pay?
Yeah, we'd have to, we have two alternatives, one estimated flow, or the other one, they put a meter on it.
Put a meter on the flow?
Right.
Okay, those are my only, to provide a discharge.
Yeah, and I'm gonna throw something out there also, just to give you some background. In the sewer line, there was a capacity issue. We reserved some capacity for some Durham properties, some Wallingford properties, which, to be honest, would probably never happen, but that was part of what we looked at, because it made sense at the time. And we also looked at capacity along the Reed's Gap Road, East Area, Burn Cliff, and some of those homes over there, we counted those. Again, we're, we want to maintain that capacity, that may or may not ever happen, but that was part of the study at that point.
To clarify my questions and thoughts, I think there's nothing better than getting a business on sewer. So I want to be clear that, you know, that's my thoughts on that, but also, I don't want it, we just have to, we really, you have to really get
Right.
real numbers.
Right.
Yeah, I'm confused, in line with what Al is raising, there's an implied answer on what you're saying, but I'm not getting an explicit answer, and I'd really like one.
Okay, I'll try.
As I read this, it says, "The facilities connected to serve White Hollow Middletown Avenue service area by the lot will not interfere with or preclude the lots within the primary, secondary, or reserve area." So, I understand that to mean, houses that are connected and all of the other houses in that area that are not connected, but I think you indicated a month or two ago that as houses are sold, the mortgage lenders seem to be requiring the seller or buyer to connect to public sewers. So I think we have to anticipate that all the houses in the primary, secondary, and reserve area will at some point connect to this sewer system.
Yeah, that's the approach I would take, absolutely.
Okay, but the answer I'm looking for is, assuming that day will come, will we have adequate capacity for all of those homes that the system was originally designed to service?
Yes, we should.
I don't like "we should."
Okay, well, again, there's always, the big thing, or one of the things that's changed since then, is generally flows, water-saving devices in homes and like-
That's the same thing the water companies suffering from, that our sewer systems are benefiting from.
Usage has gone, generally goes down. That wasn't factored into when the study was done earlier. So that's sort of a, I would say, a bonus in terms of capacity, because people generally, once they change the new toilets and flow restrictive devices, they use less water, and that's less impact on the sewer system.
Let me be perfectly clear, let me be a little bit selfish. This system was put in, over my objection, I came out to the public hearing and said, "I don't want it, I don't need it." And despite that, it was put in, and I paid $12,000, I think, in assessment.
Twelve thousand three hundred.
That I've never used. I do not want to be told, at some point in the future when I try to sell my house, that I've got a problem, I can't connect because the capacity's been exceeded. Now, I'm not alone, there are a number of other homeowners up there. So what I'm asking you is, how do we categorically determine if there is adequate capacity for the homes that that system was designed for, before we add additional connections to that system?
Okay, when the original study was done, it looked at the primary, secondary, reserve areas.
How long ago was that, Kirk?
That was in the, around 90, 91, the study was done. And it looked at the entire areas, looked at the, that could potentially tie in, including some homes in Wallingford and some in Durham. And it was pretty much a house count at that point, and then came up with a, an estimated daily flow that would go through the lines, peak flows and the like. Pump stations were sized based upon that. So, that's, that's the baseline of how everything was, was sized. There's a good portion of the primary area has been connected, I don't know the number offhand, but I do have a map and I do have a number. And absolutely, we need to reserve the capacity for the unconnected homes, and then the secondary reserve areas, and then the on, the ones that don't have connections are the secondary homes, like the Reed's Gap Road, the East Area, there's no sewer line there that exists at that point. But we want to leave the ability down the road to do that. And then the homes along Middletown Avenue, down towards the center of Norfolk, there are no connections for them. They're, because they weren't, we left capacity, but there are no connections, they have to tie into the line. And some of those are difficult connections, and it may not be feasible to even tie into the line where it's pretty deep. But we counted those in terms of number. That's what came up with the total projected flow. And really, on this property, and I'm trying to equate back to an estimated, it's really the only commercial property along Route 17 that has the ability to connect in, that meets that criteria. And it's a difference of, normally it's one home, this one is, has the equivalent projected flow at this point of about 15 homes. I don't see that as being a limiting factor.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna raise another hypothetical.
I know for a fact that the operator of the vineyard, Rosa Bianca Vineyards, wanted to connect to sewers.
And he was told he could not.
Right, and then that's, that's the thing for the, for new development, and that's, that's the one, I've always said, it's existing structures on the lot connecting in, when they're trying to build a new one. And they have to, and they also have to have a, they can't make a feasible repair to their system. If you can make a feasible repair, the ordinance spells out, then you make that repair. If you can't make a feasible repair, and WPCA has final call on what's a feasible repair, then WPCA could grant-
The letter we got from the Health District tortures that language.
Yep.
He doesn't say that it's not feasible to make a repair, he said it's more feasible to tie in. I don't know what that means.
And again, feasibility, I don't, that's a, I think it's more qualitative than exactly quantitative type of thing.
All right, my hypothetical question that I was leading up to, if Rosa Bianca Vineyards was denied the right to tie into the sewer system, how do we deny the next commercial development, the right to tie into the sewer system?
Or do you allow the next commercial development to tie in then?
Again, that's why, that's one of the reasons, it, this one was, you know, the existing structure, and again, that's, that's my understanding, it's existing structure, and if they meet certain criteria, then they can do it. It's when, Andy was talking about maybe a, an addition or a new structure, that one I need a little help from Pat on, because interpretation of the ordinance, because I don't, I don't read it that way, but-
Rosa Bianca refurbished the buildings, I don't think he put up a new building yet.
Well, no, originally, he, when he started out, he was talking about, he had a whole big building that he was trying to tie in. It wasn't a refurbishment of a building, that originally the house was gonna come down, and they were putting a whole new facility up there. That's what the request was for. And they came back and just, I think, just revitalized what they had.
Was the decision made before we got the ruling from the state for Rosa Bianca?
It didn't even go that far, because they were talking, I think, in the neighborhood of 10,000 square foot new building. Not a, you know, if that house had a failure and they couldn't make a feasible repair, they could have come to here for that. But that wasn't the issue that came forward.
But then in looking at that, so he got turned down for new stuff, so then that's-
I don't think he even asked the question, right.
If Andy wanted to do new stuff-
Well, and that's the thing, I'm-
That would be something that had to be looked at.
Yeah, and I can't answer that, I mean, the way, I was reading the ordinance, it was for existing, existing structures, if they wanted to connect in.
I think the bigger thing is, do we have the ability to actually find out how much capacity there is? Because the more people we can hook up, the better.
Yeah, and again, I would, without having-
Who would do that?
Well, I get a consultant, I mean, I could get most of it together, I have a lot of the information, but then it's, it's, it's always a timing issue, is if you want to, you know, it takes a while to do it.
So getting back to the Durham and Wallingford, because I was sitting here when Joe and his neighbors came down and yelled at us.
Didn't do any good.
With good cause, but at any rate, I think, when that went in, that we, it was mandated by the state that we left room for Durham and Wallingford.
That was in our agreement, that was our grant law agreement.
Our new letter from the state says the agreement's off the table.
Well, they, they said they're not weighing in on the connection, I didn't ask that question.
So, do-
You know, because, because there's probably 15 or 20 homes in Wallingford and 15 or 20 homes in Durham that would have factored into there.
So we do want to find out if it's, if the whole deal's off the table, if we have to, I mean, I'd much rather use that sewer for our use than Durham or Wallingford. I mean, the people, basically, the town of North Branford and the people in Joe's neighborhood paid for this. The state didn't pay anything, right? They just lent us the money.
The state gave us 20%.
So they gave us 20%.
We got a 20% grant and a loan for 80%.
The general town gave 20%?
And the town gave 20% and the-
So everybody in town paid 20%, and then the, the people up there paid 60%?
They were assessed for the rest.
Okay.
And the issue is, it's, it's not wide open for all, capacity-wise, you know, there is a limited capacity. It's not, you know, if someone wanted to put a big development, there isn't, there isn't capacity for huge flows coming in. I mean, I think the concept of what was looked at in the ordinance was pretty good. It tried to restrict it, who could connect in based upon the available capacity in the lines and the pump stations. I think the premise is still, still valid. Again, the DEP used to weigh in on it, now they no longer weigh in on it, that's, that's the difference.
So you must have our flow rate and our flow capacity.
I mean, I can go, because I got the flow records, what we're actually discharging, and-
And you have the flow capacity of the line?
Yeah, I've got a date, you know, that was studied, because it's not only this line down there, but it's when it gets pumped from Mansfield Drive, it goes, it went through the existing system that had been constructed, and there were some limiting sizes over there, so there, but that's what the capacity was based on.
Kirk, how many other existing businesses are there with potential to hook up, are there any other ones?
You know, it's really coming down from, pretty much Reed's Gap Road down, so there's a couple up there.
Gas station, pizza place.
Right there, but generally, I think there, they have pretty good soils.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, I mean, sewers aren't, aren't the answer to everything, because, to be honest with you, when you put it in the sewer, then there's a maintenance issue in the sewer lines, and we gotta, because we do have issues, people just put, think they just put grease down there, and we got to clean those lines, and there's pros and cons to sewers. I mean, they're good, in a lot of areas, if you don't have good soils, I mean, that's the only way you're gonna go. If you have good soils, and you maintain your system, you can function pretty good. But again, I just, I didn't want to get too far with this, you know, because Andy's looking at, potentially doing something, you know, we had the preliminary discussions, DEP gave their input back. I was gonna let Andy just sort of give you what his thoughts were, I mean, I think the idea of sort of bringing some life back to Mill Pond Tavern, I think a lot of people would be in favor of that. It just, it's the detail that really has to get looked at. So I mean, it's not on here for any formal action or anything, again, I think I would like to defer some of the questions to Pat in terms of the legal and what's in the ordinance, to get a clarification on. But I thought maybe you might want to hear from Andy, just what his thoughts are over there.
Hi, guys.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Andy Bazuto, Norfolk, know most of you here anyway. So yeah.
Thank you, Kirk.
It's a unique property, all of us know about the Mill Pond, we've been there since we've all grown up in town. I don't have to explain what we have. I have a contingency to purchase that property if I'm allowed to get on the sewer. I feel really strongly that that is a property that belongs on sewer because of its proximity of the river. And it does have a failed septic system, and we did some of the diligence along the way on it. And the approach to the renovation is quite extensive. I mean, I'm even talking about doing some curb cut, because one of the failures of that property, obviously, as we all know, is the entry and exit, and it's always been something that has been a deterrent to get in and out of that property. So I have some grander-than-thou thoughts, but I have comparable people and engineers ready to take on that task. I've talked to many people at state level as well, and contractors such as Aborio that have done the Route 80 corridor. So, those are feasible things that I think will change the whole demographics of that area. My goal is to open more of a venue, event-type facility. As you all know, I'm not a restaurateur, but I have some very, very viable partners. One of them is, has a very formal catering service for Yale and some of our affluent institutions in our area. And he wants to play a prominent role in there and run his operation from the lower level of the restaurant, and also have the ability to do weddings and their such, back like in the days when we had the Amados. At least it was a hall in town that was usable, rentable for occasion. So that's really the thought behind it. Neither one of us in this partnership are interested in seven-day-a-week restaurant-type facility. It's not my forte, as you all know, and not his. We thought that the venue would bring less traffic and be specific for evening, and, you know, dictated, delegated, timely. So that was the intention there. As you know, the building was built early on in the late 50s, 60s by Mr. Thomas, and it needs some extensive things. The kitchen has been removed and things like that. We need some, obviously, the decks, there's, the overgrowth of the trees have created moisture problems that we need to address right away. I can't explain enough that this is the last shot for the Mill Pond. It's something that's been close to my heart since we were kids, and I really think that it fits the criteria of an existing building that has a failed septic system, that would be beneficial to our town and the tax base. We don't have a lot of new business coming to town, guys, this is one of those things I think we should take advantage of. And it's not because I'm here, what you'll see as this project unfolds is I have a bigger picture for something that plays into even a co-op, and it's ag-related, and it's very formal, and there are some that exist in other areas of the country, and I want to bring one here to the east coast. It's a larger thought for another day. I really do feel that if this project doesn't get off now, that you might not see the Mill Pond come back. It's in trouble, and I think we could save if we move now. I'm not putting urgency behind any of this, I'm telling you, I've sat where you've sat, now I'm on this side of it, and for new business or resurrection of old properties, that, that is the one that should be saved. Listen, in my, in my vision, there's a dam there, there, we're run on hydro power. There's a whole slew of things that are in my itinerary. I've spoken to some of the folks on that board already about it. And, and, you know, luckily, in my lifetime, I've been formal enough to be involved in some legislative things and regulatory things at even larger level, and I'm not afraid of Army Corps of Engineers, I'm not afraid of lifting big things. I actually enjoy some of that. I think that property is something that has the legs. And in the end, if we can make it a destination location, like our friend with the vineyard, Charlie, people are coming there in droves, it's phenomenal. I am so glad that we allowed Charlie to do what he does there, and I only hope for more of those type facilities. And I think it's really important for ag, because a lot of farmers can't make it, because we're disconnected from the retail. So what I'm gonna build there is gonna give farmers access to retail. So, that's the grand thought, these are the small steps. I want to buy that property, I want to resurrect it, put it back on the map. People from everywhere remember the Mill Pond, it's not just our town thing. There are people, Southern Connecticut, back when Chivoni, I mean, so I really do think that we could resurrect it. It will be the Mill Pond again. That's my thought. So, as far as the sewer, it is the closest thing to the center of town, it doesn't interrupt any of the flow north of that, it is one of the- of the few properties that probably can use it more than not because of the river and our proximity there. The septic system has failed. It's on the top in that parking lot area. One of the things I do need is, in addition to that building, because the kitchen area is 1960-era, let's say, and it's just not big enough, wide enough. The cooler system is from the late 50s. There's some things that, and I would come and propose it to you. It looks like it's a 4,800 square foot, plus or minus, rough estimate. We have some drawings that we're tentative on, but I kind of had everybody hold up, because I really can use this sewer hookup. I think it really makes the property viable. That will give me the ability to use money, change that entryway. We need to generate a certain amount of revenue out of this property. It doesn't make it viable. Business guys understand what I'm talking about there. So that's it. Now, anything I can answer? Again, I don't own it yet. This is all what I'm trying to do to own it. So that's it. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what do we need to do, Kurt, to get... To be able to make a decision on this?
Well, I just wanted to put out for you. Any questions? I mean, I said, I think some questions have to be run by Pat in terms of wanting to make sure we're in compliance with an ordinance. The other one, and I will try to look at the report back, look at the capacity issue. I'm going on a lot of... Because I was involved in the whole process when everything went in, so I have a pretty good recollection of what all that was. But then again, you brought out the question, you know, this one, and then any other, like, potential commercial properties. There's a few there that could potentially tie in. I'd have to try to come up with possible projected flows or things like that. But...
So does everybody... I mean, I know, does everybody agree with the concept if we're guaranteed that there's capacity for everybody that there was supposed to be, and then some?
As long as all the houses...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just seems to be contingent on Kurt's numbers.
I think you'll find them low, you know? Capacity we're using now is low versus the ability we have to use.
It's not... It is a little bit of a difficult connection, just to throw it out. They're gonna have to run something across the bridge in order to span that river. So they gotta do some engineering on that if we get to that point. But at this point, I think I probably need some clarifications from Pat in terms of, one, the way I was reading it, the existing building shouldn't be so much the issue. The question is, if there's an addition, and that's one I would want to make clarification on. I'm gonna throw out, I really hadn't contemplated until Andy brought it up, the potential of if you put a standalone, another structure. And that brings up, throws a Bianca Orchard. If they're gonna do something, there's the potential for someone there to do something. So all that really should be looked at as, you know, from a global point of view. And I can start putting some numbers together and try to work forward to that, and then have some discussions with Pat in terms of the ordinance-wise. Again, the capacity is... That's been my concern all along, because we don't want to take away from somebody that's essentially either bought in the system or that was planned for in the overall facilities plan when we looked at where sewers would go. And I can't... I will follow up on the question to DEP in terms of, what about the Wallingford and Durham capacity that we reserved? Is that even... Is that still on the table, or is that something that we could potentially look to eliminate? Because somewhere, I do have the original study, and that's probably what I would use, and try to update that.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So then, I'll try to work to that. Next WPCA meeting, try to give an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is citizen statements and petitions under water pollution control authority. Seeing none, we'll move into the regular town council meeting. Reports of committee, boards, and commissions. Economic Development Commission?
Economic Development Commission had a meeting last night. I will have a full report at our next meeting.
Park and Recreation Commission?
Next meeting will be on the 27th. They did not have a meeting last month.
Police Commission?
Police Commission, next meeting will be June 12th. If you remember, our last town council meeting, there was a request for the Police Commission to have a meeting with the town council, and Mike did check into that. The topic is okay for an executive session, and they're asking if we could do that at the meeting at the 20th at six, from 6:30 to 7:00. Is that's okay with the town council?
What is that regarding?
It's confidential information.
Anybody have a problem with the early meeting?
If you remember, they wanted us to go there, but the council felt...
Oh, right.
Have them come here and for just a half an hour.
It's fine.
Okay.
Next meeting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Park Commission, I did not attend that meeting. Anthony, is there anything that came up?
All good.
All good. Board of Education and Town Council Communication Subcommittee?
There's no meetings.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
No meetings.
Public Safety Communications?
No meetings.
Planning and Zoning Commission?
Next meeting will be on the 15th.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask if we could have the report, if it's okay with the county council on the Daniel Cosgrove Animal Shelter purely up rather than have those folks wait until the end, which is lawn meeting?
Sure.
Does anybody have a problem with that, doing that now?
Make a motion to move it up on the agenda?
I'd make that motion to move it up.
I'll second it.
Local?
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Funnin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Nana?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
And Counselor Rose?
Yes. Now it's a yes. We have the update on the Daniel Cosgrove Animal Shelter. Stephanie Milken?
That's me. Hi, thank you. Thanks for... Thank you for moving that up. I appreciate that. So it's been a great experience so far. I have Laura Bourbon with me, the animal control officer, just in case you had any questions that I couldn't answer. So it's been great. This is an opportunity of a lifetime, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity. We've had many fundraisers since I started back in the fall. We had a pasta dinner. We had a fundraiser at the Home Restaurant around Christmas time. The Stony Creek Brewery, they donated proceeds every... Once every Thursday for a month of, I think, December or January. And obviously, since the whole incident with Hope, that's brought a lot of spotlight to the shelter, and people have come out of the woodwork. You may have heard of Frisco's Pizza in New Haven that donated 100% of their profits one day for Hope and for the shelter and all the other animals for the medical fund. So it's just been... It's been amazing. It's been a lot of support from the community, from North Branford, Branford, everywhere. Do you have any questions for me or for Laura?
We have a bunch of upcoming fundraisers, too, which I brought. I brought a bunch of stuff for you guys. So you have lots of gifts coming your way. I'm gonna give you this to hold on to. One second.
How's your capacity at the shelter?
We're full.
Are you?
We're full. Yeah, we're really full. This is our time of year, though. We're kind of like a retail store. It's like this time of year kind of sucks in terms of adoptions because people are just gearing down from school. They're thinking about vacation. So as people are going on vacation or gearing down from school, believe it or not, they dump their animals because they want to go on vacation and not have to pay for boarding. So then we fill up. And then as people come back from vacation or are kind of settling into the summer, they come and they adopt. So then we do good. Usually, sometimes...
Isn't that incredible?
Yeah. Yeah. So it's craziness. It really is. So this is our time when we get really full, from dogs being abandoned, mom cats with kittens.
Ducks.
Ducks. We have... There's 19 ducks that were just abandoned that took us a long time to catch. And there's just lots and lots of animals. We had a bunch of guinea pigs left at the front door. So like I said, as people are going away and thinking about trying to take their children and go someplace, they leave their animals. So it's busy right now.
So do you have adoption events?
Tons and tons of adoption events. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna come up and give you guys each something.
That was your lead-in.
So this is a fundraiser and adoption event that's going on this weekend.
Fantastic.
And it's right on the border of Branford and North Branford, at the Branford Antique Center.
Thank you.
We're doing an antique road show. Can you hand me my...
Sure.
Now I'm gonna do this, because I have more to hand out. We also have a rabies clinic coming up, and we have our apple camp coming up. So we have a lot of things going on this time of year. It's really busy for us. And then I have a calendar for you to view that I brought. So I haven't seen you guys in a long time. Getting kind of a mid-of-year calendar. And then Hope gave each of you a thank you card and a coffee. So I'm giving that to you.
Laura, you just got home for the ducks over here.
I'll take the ducks.
I have more to catch. I'll be in touch. So there's quite a lot going on for us at this time of year. We do tons of events. We have an event coming up at Pet Value this weekend in Branford to do adoptions. And this is our time of year. Starting in the spring up until the fall, we have usually, once a weekend or twice a weekend, we have adoption events. So we're kind of all over the place between North Haven and we just named it.
Laura, are you up to the timer?
We are. We are. Yeah. Yeah. Anywhere they let us be, we'll be. But I mean, really, for being kind of as crazy as it is, we're doing really well. We have an excellent staff. We have a lot of volunteers, and we have great support from the public and both our communities. So...
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into Town Manager's Board. Update on Ruth Bear's House, RFP for painting.
Yes, this was a item that came up at the last meeting, and I believe it's Counselor Miller had suggested we take a look at that. So we are putting together an RFP in terms of bidding for that. And we find, I'm happy to report, some tourism funds that can fund that project. And that's included in your packet. I believe that tourism fund has a balance of about $40,000 or $38,000 left in terms of assets there. So that's a plus. I'm hoping to try to figure out whether or not... We'll do some testing to see if lead's an issue there. Obviously, that have a major factor in terms of where the price goes, but we're putting it out. Should be out, hitting the street pretty soon.
Historically, what have we used the tourism dollars for?
Great question. I'm not sure I can answer that. I'll have to defer to Anthony. I think probably some brochures and other things, but...
Well, I see they paid... We paid money for the tractor pole. What's...
That's a subset of that fund is the tractor pole money. That doesn't... The initial corpus of that money came from the Great New Haven Visitors Bureau that disbanded probably in the mid to late 90s, and each of the town that represented it in that Visitors Bureau got a portion of the proceeds. We've used it for some expenses towards the moving of the gas station behind the Atwater Library, things that... Where tourism in North Branford really don't go hand in hand, but whatever we could do to try to entice people to come into town. So obviously, you know, this property would be fallen to that category of potentially a destination. So it would be a viable use of those funds.
Okay.
Oh, that's it. We're moving along. I did sit down and consult with the president of the Tutica Historical Society, Suzanne Tuchera, to brief her on the project and get her input with respect to how we proceed, so in terms of timing and getting that done. So we're moving along.
Thank you.
So could that same fund be used for the Auger House?
Yes. And if we segue to the Auger House, I have no ideas. I put it out through the departments. It is swing space storage right now, but there are no long-term plans or concepts at this stage for ideas for future use of that facility, of that building. But to your point, I mean, I'm drawing a blank. I'm asking, I've asked the department heads, but it is getting to the point where either you're gonna put money into it, you know, to, you know, sustain it and restore it, or at some point, it's going to continue to deteriorate, and we're gonna have another problem, another teardown.
That's what we should look at for painting, possibly the roof on that, you know, to make sure it's weather tight.
Yeah. So I'm, you know, I'm open to ideas.
Next is update on the NBIS roof project.
Yes, I just wanted to bring to your attention the sort of the financing on that, which is not too bad at all. But this was before I had the numbers from Eagle Rivet, which came in, I think came in while I was away. Took a look at those. That adds an additional $11,000 to the project and still well under what you authorized at $294. So I talked with Bill Chody today. It is dry.
Wow, after all this rain, that's a good...
Yeah. But again, sometimes it takes a two to three-day lag on some of these rain events, and that we see something. So he said, by Thursday or Friday, I'll let you know. I said, great. And then we're looking forward as the temperatures begin to rise again into the, maybe into the 90s, that we...
This year?
Yeah. As early as Monday, hopefully. We look again at Horizon for that recommissioning of the air conditioning units and so forth. And so there's money that we'll need to expend on that. But unless there's some major issue that we haven't seen, you know, this is gonna be under budget. And we're gonna try and get that recommissioned for this June or July, fine-tune the system itself and monitor that, and hopefully be able to close this out somewhere down, you know, in the next couple of months. But he's still monitoring, I think he said Room 306. There's some issues there. I think Eagle Rivet has addressed that. That might, I think, was a... Might have been a flashing issue. But there is still, from time to time, these weather events that are directional, and that may be to a flashing issue, or it may be to a window issue. So we're not quite sure. But and, you know, it happens infrequently, but it does happen where, you know, whether it's a northeast, southeast directional, and it comes in sideways or something like that, and depends on how heavy and how hard it comes in, you do find... That's where the problems come. So knock on wood. So far, at this point, so far, so good.
Well, I know one of the big problems areas that they were talking about is the assistant principal's office, which is, you know, it's not leaking from above or coming, because main floor. And so is that one of those infrequent directional things, or has the problem been fixed?
I think, I can't say. I think it might be. That might be exactly one of those directional issues. It came up a couple of weeks ago. Eagle Rivet was out, and again, it didn't fall back on the list as of yet. 306 is what we're monitoring. I mean, obviously, the principal's gonna... Assistant Principal's Office is gonna, you know, notify us if there's another incident there, but so far, there hasn't been since the last time Eagle Rivet was up and repaired and took a look at it. So again, keep our fingers crossed on that. But you're right, it could be windows, could be something else.
So they haven't recommissioned the air conditioning at all yet? So they're doing that... I mean, are we on board with that, or...
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I'd be calling Horizon. I mean, they've done levels in terms of programming. They've done basically two-thirds of their allotment for what we had contracted with them for. They've drawn down and done the work, and it just is gonna be the final step because they have to wait for the temperatures to rise in order to test the system.
So are they scheduled for next week, or they're...
No, no. We're gonna... Bill wanted to hold off until we got through this week. I'm gonna call them tomorrow to see what their availability is, but we're planning ahead. We might be able to get them for next week.
Especially, I mean, if we were all believing that there was a condensation problem going from 45 degrees to 90 degrees next week, could be a good time for some due points.
Good testing, yeah.
So I would get them scheduled as soon as we could.
Good point, yeah. Yeah, you're right. The change in terms of the weather patterns is a good opportunity.
I know it's not on your agenda here for Town Manager, but is there any update on the boilers for the high school? Because I know they had the bid opening after... It was supposed to be in April sometime, right around our budget, and then they delayed it, and I haven't heard anything back from that yet.
Yeah.
All except that it was...
Over budget. Over budget.
Way over budget from what we allocated.
Right.
Based on their estimate.
Was it three fifty or something like that?
We, we allocated one fifty.
Based on their estimate.
Based on their estimate, and the last number I heard was three hundred and something.
At the, at the, at their last finance committee meeting, they decided to rebid it with a lower BTUs. They're gonna rebid it.
Yeah.
That's what they, that's what it does.
Yeah, what I heard from some of the contractors that bid it was, the, and, uh, you know, don't quote me on BTUs, but I'll, I'll put it into just imaginary numbers. So when you looked at the pipe size in the building, they could only take five BTUs. But the engineers had bid ten BTUs, so...
The system was oversized.
Right, so we were gonna have all these BTUs that couldn't be used in the existing pipe system.
So to clarify out, so then the initial...
And I mean, we're in the millions, I just am using five and ten.
No, no, I hear you, but that's a good point, though. So then the initial cost estimate, that was not necessarily official.
Yeah, hopefully when they, when they work it out and come up with a new, new number.
They'll be closer.
Couldn't be used. Yeah, in other words, it was designed with so many BTUs that could never have been used.
Right, so then...
So they would never need to be used.
So that's why the, the numbers that came in were so high, but...
That's what they're hoping.
So then the, the first estimate that we got was that based on what we have capacity to deliver?
I'm not sure of that.
My understanding is that they're definitely gonna, you're gonna rebid it at a lower BTU.
Okay.
That's what, that's what it does.
Do you see what I, my question is, though? Like, I don't know what, our initial...
Yeah, I, I don't know what the initial, you know...
'Cause that's what we based it at.
I mean, you would think it was simple, that we have an oil burner there that's so many BTUs.
And then just replace it.
Why couldn't we replace it with a, you know, gas modern boiler that's so many BTUs?
Right.
But it wasn't that easy, so...
But that's what we based the money on, so...
So, they're working on it.
Next item is report on recycling program.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, bring this program to your attention, that, um, the Hank Petraska and, and the Solid Waste, Hazard Waste Recycling Committee has, uh, put together a nice little program that, uh, is out collecting film. And, uh, in fact, um, just got notification that Hank had applied for and received, is going to receive a twenty-five hundred dollar grant from, uh, DEP to further the, uh, program and getting, um, more of this film out of the waste recycling stream. And, uh, I think there's a lot of good people working on it and doing some good work. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention, that what they get out of it at the end is a, a nice bench that, uh, the first group is gonna be, uh, with the, uh, folks at the school that are, are working in the work program, uh, that are collecting, out there collecting it. So I just wanted to give recognition to, uh, that group and to Hank for his efforts. And I thought you should know about it.
Thank you. Next item is community events and presentations. Any update on our Flag Day? You wanna plug Flag Day again?
It's on the, uh, it's on the, on the website, um, so for a, a dry day.
For a dry day.
The date again for Flag Day is June fourteen.
Yeah, we'll have the ceremony out front like we did last year, it should be nice.
Since we're talking about, uh, community events, could, so I know I missed something, but I gotta ask about the Memorial Day Parade and a rain date parade. We had this whole discussion a year ago.
Yep.
So, why did I, where, what did I, was I sleeping? When did we not have a rain date?
Well, we did have a rain date for the Saturday after, but most of the participants, or a number of the participants
Could not participate.
could not participate, and a number of town officials were not available also to have the parade. Personally, I think the parade was called off a little early for Memorial Day, 'cause it didn't rain. We, I think we could have gotten it in, 'cause it didn't start raining until later in the day, which was unfortunate. I know they did have the dedication for the MIA person on, uh, over by the church, by the memorials, but...
Which was very well attended, given that the parade was called off.
There was no parade, yeah.
It was very well attended. Okay.
Next, anything else? Next is citizen statements and petitions and correspondence.
Just to digress for a second, so when do we wanna make a rain date for next year's Memorial Day Parade?
I don't know if it, I mean, is that the problem, it just doesn't work?
I don't know. Mike?
Yeah, it, it seems like people, uh, are, are busy, and, but, I think Gina had the tally, it was nearly eighty...
What if we put it on Sunday with a rain date on Monday?
Well, the issue was surrounding towns, when we discussed this last year, it was, people didn't wanna do it because of the surrounding towns Memorial Day Parade.
North Haven has their Memorial Day Parade on Sunday.
Yeah, they have it on Saturday.
On Saturday.
Okay, so then, no rain date.
We only get these once in a great, great while.
Two years in a row.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Come on, it's climate change.
Next, next item is citizen statements, petitions and correspondence.
Good evening, Cliff Potter, twelve fifty-one Middletown Avenue. Um, later on tonight, you have to go into executive session. Uh, this concerns filling a property next to me, which has flooded me ever since the year two thousand and one. Unfortunately, you're gonna go in and I don't know how much information you're gonna get, because none of the original players are available. Carol Zep's no longer employed here, the town attorney was John Gesman, and Mike wasn't the town manager. I don't mean that derogatory, but I mean, I think the flow is not gonna be there. I would like to give you some information, and maybe you could request my presence there, because this is a non-stop issue with me since two thousand and one. It floods my property, the illegal filling went on for years, court cases went on, cease and desist, stop work things. All this went on, but, uh, Mr. Kopplick did not believe in the written law. To the day he died, he was violating the law, the house was foreclosed on, we, the bank owns it now. There's a chance maybe the bank will fund the removal of the illegal fill and put the pond back, which will alleviate flooding on my property. But with your permission, I'd like to at least pass out some information, and if you wanted me to, and if you would allow it, I would come into the executive session and try to give you some information, because this has gotta stop. I can't keep waiting fifteen, twenty years for a problem that won't get fixed if, if somebody doesn't do something soon. So let me pass this out, and we'll discuss.
But I, I don't see anything on executive session of the two items listed on exes, executive session, yeah.
Nine forty-four, does that...
Nine forty-four.
Oh.
Yeah.
No, fifteen.
It backs up from my property. It backs up water to my property. So I'm gonna...
Oh, okay.
That's why it's, uh, that's why it's... Uh, I'll link some of the stuff.
Thank you.
This first item I'm passing out is a, an original drawing of where the property had, uh, nine forty-four Totucket had a pond on it. This is the face sheet, face sheet of its, uh, of the settlement where it's, uh, the town could, where somebody's supposed to go in and fix it. This is one of the four buildings, and the town manager would probably make it clear in your meeting.
Which parcel, Cliff, is it parcel B you're referring to?
Well, it's all combined now, but parcel B has had a pond on it that has now been filled with illegal wood chips, and now is higher than any land in the back of the property.
When was it filled, Cliff?
Man, oh, this happened two thousand and two, two thousand and three. It, it never stopped happening, let's put it that way. Now, this is the quality the fill that went in there. Uh, you can't, you can't tell me this oil tank isn't under the ground, or that tire, they never left the property. The gentleman had his own bulldozer. As soon as illegal construction fill came in, he would backfill over it. Here's a picture of Montis' bulldozer, backfilling, illegal fill that was delivered to his property. Who doesn't like that, oops, sorry, gentlemen, knocking around here. There's a tire in there, there's an oil tank, they're still under the ground, I can assure you. Oil tank, tire, construction debris. You, I should have offered my backyard to that lady, the ducks could have fit right into this area real quick.
You have the signature page, please.
Huh?
The signature page.
Uh, that's, pardon me, what, what's that?
It's assigned by a judge, you, you have the signature page.
Well, I can get it for you, this is just...
Oh, I got it in my office, but...
Well, I, I ran out of print, I was doing all this at home, but I copied the main states. We know it's there, right? Are you questioning whether the judge signed it? That's my backyard when it rains hard, because the water has nowhere to go, because it used to go into Mr. Kopplick's area and his small pond that he has, had filled.
This is your backyard?
That's my backyard.
Now, the pond, it's a natural pond, it wasn't...
It was, yeah.
It wasn't a man-made pond.
No, it was there, it was part of a swale, it's a pond next to me, a swale and his small pond. But he decided to take tons and tons of wood chips and fill everything in. The history, I'll, I'll read you some of the history that's been going on.
The animal shelter has some ducks we could...
That's what I'm saying, I'll cut my little stuff, I mean, they could paddle around all they want. This is another picture of the construction debris, we'll be right back. How do I know there's not asbestos in this stuff? Like I said, Carol Zep worked for Budoff, John Gesman, this guy would, uh, claim his wife owned the property, then his son owned the property. So every time you go to court, somebody else owned the property. Cease and desist meant nothing to him. Uh, just meant, well, come on, fill it up faster, guys, I might have to stop someday.
Who dumped all the debris, Cliff? Where did he get all the debris?
Anybody that had, was looking for a place to get rid of it, their dump trucks would pull in, and they, and as fast as they would dump it, he'd be covering it and level it. He, he had us all bulldozer and construction equipment on print. So he has filled the whole left side of his property up, to the point where now the water that used to go to the left can't go left, so it comes back into the pond next to me and back into my property. I sent plenty of zoning, and I think the town manager timed a letter back on April of two thousand and one, uh, about what was going on. Carl Kilduff, I believe, was the town manager then. On, uh, ten four of two thousand and one, planning and, uh, the building department issued their first cease and desist. On five thirteen, two thousand and two, a court case, Mr. Kopplick agreed to apply, comply, because what the heck, why not? Well, he didn't comply. Then on June ninth, two thousand and three, court case for contempt. Uh, eleven twenty-two oh four, another court case, and that's where the town was granted permission to fix it. Ten four oh five, a stop work order, didn't stop him, it just kept on coming. I mean, he just, uh, uh, it went to Superior Court, John even went to Superior Court. And like I say, I'm not, you know, I kinda wish we could have John come back, 'cause John put many hours, uh, he would always let me know what's going on. He'd let me know when the court case was going to Superior Court in Hartford. Uh, Mr. Kopplick was just very shrewd, and he just didn't believe in the law. The whole time, he just kept going, he started at his house, the construction material, and then it was the chips, the wood chips. And they kept coming and coming and coming, and, uh, the problem is, I can show you this, I don't have a lot of them. But here's the wood chips piling up, this is a Google map picture. See the wood chips on this property? I, I would have made more copies. Those are just, that's a Google Maps shot, all the wood chips. That's where the pond used to be, filled, looked like immobiles. And he would take, you know, these trees are just, wanna get rid of the stuff, so they're happy to come in. And this is, uh, the wood chips, just tons and tons and tons of them. Okay. I, like I say, I got that on Google Earth. And, and that's, now that's back further, the, the green part now is all this under, under, uh, you know what I'm saying? This is back further, if you use a tree line, so he just kept going. So he's filled in the whole left side of his property. And so now tonight, like, in executive session, you're gonna have to make a decision. And I don't understand why the town, I mean, you, you even did it for my neighbor. Kurt Selk was by Art DeJoy's house, it was a, a mess. The town cleaned it up, they put a lien against the house, and Kurt paid it. You've, uh, I'm just looking for some relief. I mean, a lot of the places that the town tore down was for cosmetic. I need this to stop the flooding in my yard. And the house was on sale, I, I notified, notified the town manager, the house was for sale at eighty-eight thousand dollars. And I had met with him and Carrie, and I pointed out to him, he said, "Well, it'll probably come up in a title search." Well, at eighty-eight thousand dollars, it might be, somebody might pay cash for it. Are they gonna have the funds to do all this work? Or is it, are they gonna claim bankruptcy, and I'm still gonna get flooded? It's time some action was taken. You have to protect me now. I mean, I've been very patient, I've sat through all this. I, I had to get an engineered system when I built my new house in nineteen ninety-eight to protect the pond next to me. Bob Gascola had to engineer me a system where it was like two large loops, so the water wouldn't go out very far from the system. And at the same time, my neighbor is just violating every law possible. Now that same water, I mean, here's my map, and here's my leaching fields. My growth for leaching fields is right here. Here's the water, how close it's getting. If you look at this picture, this little water area, it has come over the boundary here. And it's, so I, I'm, if I ever have to expand my septic system, it's in trouble, because the water is coming back so far. The pond's here, now if you look at this picture, it's overflowed the banks, and it's coming onto my lawn. I've spent thousands of dollars in tree removal, because all my trees died over there. Here's my growth for septic, here's the water coming, coming up there, knocking out of the tunnels. So again, am I frustrated? Yes, I'm frustrated. Am I patient? Yes. Am I willing to work with anybody? Yes. The pond, my growth, the pond is overflowing onto my lawn there, into my growth area. So again, it's my growth pond, overflowing pond into my growth area. Okay, here's my growth for my septic system, here's the pond, here's a picture of the pond overflowing the banks going into my overflow system area. Here's my growth, here's the pond, here's, uh, an actual picture taken in two thousand and one of the water overflowing the pond and coming onto my lawn headed for my growth area. So again, what I'm looking for, number one, I don't know what's under that fill by the house, and I don't think you guys do either. I've got a well, someday I gotta worry about that. The flooding is becoming an issue, it's still an issue, and it needs to be fixed. I mean, why do I have to wait almost twenty years for restitution? You know, uh, I don't know if, if the town manager can update us, I sent him an email over the weekend, the house is off the market. If you go on nine, if you Google nine forty-four Totucket, you'll see the house came off the market.
The bank took it off the market?
We don't know. Uh, he never got back to me with an answer why the house came off the market. If the bank still owns it, then you can go after the bank to correct it. Once a private owner owns it, I'm screwed again. So tonight, when you're in executive session, and it's up to you if you want me there or not, if you don't want me there, I understand that. But I need to be represented properly, and this needs to stop now.
Cliff, uh, Carrie called the Realtor, but hasn't heard back yet, we don't know the reason why it came off the market.
Well, exactly, now, if, if the bank, they'll just let the town take it over. If they're, if they're only gonna get eighty-eight thousand for it to begin with, and now they know about all these repairs, are they gonna abandon it? And, now they, they have paid their taxes, uh, the attorney's looked that up, so for some reason, they paid the taxes. But nobody had made them aware, until I had notified him, that I, I just happened to Google it. Hey, the house is up for sale, how can a house be up for sale with all this action waiting to be taken against it? So I don't know if the attorney was able to stop the bank from selling it or what, but again, I don't know what's going on with that part of it. But I, I'm afraid that once a private owner gets it, I have no recourse.
Cliff, there was no lien against the property?
There was. Kind of a hidden lien.
Yeah, with a court order. So then I'll save my questions for executive session, but I do have one question is, so if somebody pays cash for a, a, a house, then they still, then they don't have to do a title search, and they don't have to make sure that there's any liens on a house or anything?
Yeah, of course not, you always gotta do a title search.
Okay.
Every single time.
All right, so I, I just wanted to clarify.
All right, well, again, but, I mean...
So then chances are, nobody bought the property.
We don't know that, it's off the market, and, uh, we don't know why.
But, okay. But, okay.
All I do is I go on Google search. I did it this weekend, and then, so my mic was off last week. And Mike's been very cooperative, but they don't know the long dragged out history. I mean, thank God, Carol used to work hours. Kirk can tell you, right? She used to work hours researching. You get to court, Joe Kopplick would turn on the tears, claim sickness and stuff, and then court would take a right turn. Orwell, I'm here for my wife. Property's in her name, but she can't make it. So the court would say, well, you can't do any, you know.
But there's still a judgment against it, though.
Oh, yeah. Yes, there is. So why can't we move forward? So I mean, I hope you can give me some answers. And like I say, I know I'm probably not allowed in executive session, but I just have, and I don't like having so much history about this. It's been a burr under my saddle for how many years now? And, you know, it's got to stop.
So we don't know who owns it as of this moment?
Bank of what?
The Bank of America.
Bank of America.
They bought the mortgage.
Well, they defaulted, right? It was defaulted on or what do you call it, foreclosed?
Foreclosed.
Was it foreclosed here? So they didn't buy it on speculation. They're stuck with it. That's the best way to say it. So how cooperative they're going to be and what pressure you can put on them? And at what point do we have the town? It's not demolition. It's dirt. Removing dirt and putting a pond back in so the water will stop just hanging in my yard and go where it used to go. I mean, I just don't have enough. I have a box in my truck if you want to see more photos of how it used to be. But I mean, I just, it just gets, I mean, the date's from 2001. We're in almost 2018 now, so it's just ongoing. So thank you for venting, and hopefully you can help me out.
Okay, next item is.
Bill Savestano, Sunnyside Drive. Did you direct something at me about the flag day?
I want to do that.
That's not me. That's not me.
Okay.
Okay. Just about the parade. I was one of the ones, I think it was only two of us last year, kind of spoke about the Saturday after. And hindsight is 2020, and it's probably a bad deal. I think we need more discussion on that. In fact, I put a letter in the mail today to the council about the parade. And thank you, everybody. The family was very well received, the Creamy family. Had about 16 of them coming from out of town. And so they were really, hopefully you might get a letter from them also. But the parade, I think, like I said, is the last meeting. Need a little more discussion as far as the format. I'll just reiterate for a second. I found some folders from when we cleaned out the post about how the post commander was in charge years ago, seemed to be just him. But there was a formal letter, and that's the only thing I'm stressing a little bit. And the other thing next year, consideration, because there's no VFW in town. And I'm not an official, but I did ask. We might have to go for the ceremony itself. Might have to go out of town and see if we can get guys from another post. Because it's got to be commissioned people. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, before we move on, and I don't know, maybe you were going to do this at the end, but the letter we had from Joan Tudor about the sign being a mess and Franny needs to take it down tomorrow? I agree, but I'm just wondering about that tourism money. Why wouldn't signs in town, why couldn't we use a tourism grant for that?
Right. And we did.
I'm wondering if we could. I mean, we had some beautiful signs come in, and you know what? To me, you know, driving into town, if you had a really nice sign like some of the ones we saw in the things that were expensive, but, you know, it's kind of like looking at the basketball courts and tennis courts over here. You know what? Makes you feel good. It's like, hey, I'm entering North Bradford. They care about their town.
We talked about it about a year ago. Did we put it in economic development's hands or something?
Well, we didn't have the money for the signs.
Right.
Now I see this tourism grant, and it's like, you know what?
That's a good question.
There's a lot of agritourism in town.
We were waiting for.
Entering North Bradford's back on the site.
Right, right.
So maybe Anthony can look into that.
Actually, Carrie has, yeah, Carrie's been working on it. She's got a new quote on, I forget who, I can't remember the company, but I can bring that forward in next meeting and take, I think that's an eligible, it's a great idea.
Yeah, please do.
All right, great. I hope you design the one down in my end of town. All right, sorry, Mike.
All right, nobody else? Move on to resignations and appointments. Resignation of Liz Buzard from the Solid Hazards, Waste and Recycling Committee.
We shall accept.
Second.
Go call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arman.
Yes.
Councilor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
We will move into unfinished business. Discussion and action approval of proposed ordinance 2017-1, Chapter 40, entitled Fire Department.
Yeah, that's not yet ready.
Okay. Next item is preliminary park concept and cost estimates for 1599 Foxon Road.
That is not ready either. Unfortunately, there was a delay in the Park and Recs Commission not meeting to discuss the concept. And I think Fran is still working as well with Lauren on cost estimates and/or maintenance efforts. So we'll have to bring that back for the next meeting.
The maintenance that's going on so far from Public Works is excellent. Property looks tremendous. I drove into it the other day, and from within, it's a stunning piece of property. You don't get the sense of what that property is from the roadway.
Thank you. Next is finalized 2017-2018 budget, set mill rate, authorized signing of.
Mayor, I think you really need 13B addressed first.
Yeah, there was some underlying questions the council had, obviously in terms of the budget process. And I think Anthony makes a good point. You probably need to take that.
All right, why don't we move to, somebody make a motion to move the 13B budget information. Pat Young?
So moved.
Second.
Pat, you're on deck.
We got a vote?
Yeah, you should.
Yeah, we got a vote on that.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Arman.
Yes.
Councilor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
I just want to speak briefly, if I may, about an ordinance known as Ordinance Number 138. That was passed about 20 years ago under the direction of the Bedford Taxpayers Association. And what it did was try to limit future increases in taxes to equal amount of the growth of the grant list. It was done by an ordinance which attempted to change the system of the budgetary system and the charter, which is the organic law of the pond, which you can't change it with an ordinance. But they did. But nobody's used it since. What it was, they just had a mathematical formula and said, this is, if you got $20 increase in state grants, you could add $20 in your spending, but you can't do any more than that. Of course, that never worked out. They never used it. Our town attorney at the time, this is about 20 years ago, John Gesmandi, ruled that it was invalid because it was contrary to the state statute and that it's contrary to the charter. And so the restrictions placed in your deliberations tonight will not take into account, don't take into account, that provision of Ordinance 138 or 182, the transposing numbers, because it's a little bit illegal and that part of it. So you just go as if it never existed. That's my point I wanted to make today.
So I have a question on, the other thing was what Anthony brought up last week that, and I think that it was shame on us for not knowing the charter. But the first thing in the charter, no, you know, the thing he brought up was not the ordinance from the Taxpayers Association. He brought up the line in the charter that says.
It wasn't in the charter. That's my whole point.
Right, but, no, no, totally different, totally different. This thing was, you read it to us, and it said that if we lose funding from the state or the federal government, we are supposed to cut our budget by that much. So that's the first thing it said. Then it went on to say, but then the council could, you know, pass that on or something. So I think that was a question that some of us wanted clarified.
The clarity is what I've just told you. That was not part of the charter. It was an ordinance, 183, 138, the transposing numbers.
Is that what you were talking about, Anthony?
Yeah.
That is. So what you read was the old Taxpayers Association ordinance that they got through?
Well, the Genesis was the Taxpayer Association. I just Googled the, based on the charter and ordinances about the budget. That's what I found. Section 8-5 talks about the reduction in state aid and federal aid. But in past research, that that's not applicable.
Frankie Beldow wrote it. Remember that?
Sure.
Yep. He was the president of the Taxpayers Association.
He was. He wrote it.
All right, so that is the same thing then?
So that doesn't.
What you explained didn't talk about a reduction in state or federal, but that is.
Well, I know. I agree with you.
Right.
I'm not clear as to why. It seems to me, what am I missing here? It seems to me it's the same thing.
Well, one is, because it was based on an ordinance, and John Gesmandi, the town attorney at that time, ruled that it was invalid.
You can't, yeah, you can't change the charter with an ordinance.
You see, when I first got on here, we used to follow that. You know, Frank was alive, and he used to be here yelling at us, and you had to follow this, and we did. But then we got a ruling on it. Well, wait a minute, an ordinance can't change the charter. So then it's been gone for, I don't know, Anthony, what do you think, 20 years?
At least.
So then we reverted back to the charter?
Right.
Just because of that.
But we never got rid of that.
Also took away.
But we used to follow it.
Took away the charter, the ability for the council to decide what the budget for the town should be. It wasn't just done by rote, by money from heaven.
Okay.
That's the big problem with it. It took away the budget-making authority from the people, because you are the people.
So what you're saying is you agree with what John Gesman ruled out?
Yeah, absolutely. I think he was right. He was brave to do it, but he did it.
And then again, I don't know how we could ever, we couldn't pass on the cut from the state anyway.
Right. So then, let's say we get cut a million dollars. Then we do have to cut that amount of spending, or we can, we have?
No, he's saying we don't have to.
Okay, all right. Okay. So we take it out of our fund balance, for example?
Well, we have to figure out how we do it. It could be a combination of things, whatever we decide to do.
Okay, I'm clear. Thank you.
Anthony and Michael have been sweating over this and me for the last month.
Yeah, well, we all have been.
So you have before you what I deem to be six options for the budget, which is ridiculous. But there are three main variables that remain unresolved as recently as today. The first being the motor vehicle cap at 32. Is that in? Is that out? By law, it's in now at 32 cap, but the talk was it might be eliminated. Nothing finalized. The teacher's retirement payment. Are we getting charged with that? Are we not getting charged with that? In the conversation today with the folks at CCM was that, as you know, from any actuarial calculation about pension, there's two pieces, a normal piece, normal service cost, and a past service cost. Part of the discussion now at the state level is the towns may share in the normal service cost piece only, but not the past service cost. But you couldn't quantify it. The third piece is which governor's numbers do we use, the one we got in February, the numbers? Or we get the last ones in May that whack us another $1.7 million? So I don't envy your position, but there are six options with corresponding mill rates and the relatively increases year over year. And we need kind of to make a decision to which of those six numbers you guys feel comfortable with.
Why is there not 1.53 mills in your list of numbers?
Because, excellent question. After the budget was being printed, to go back out to print, we noticed that two changes that the council enacted were not, did not flow through. I passed out the sheets the last week. If not, I have additional sheets for it. One being the $150,000 cut in the benefits line was made on the line. It didn't flow to the bottom line total. And the, I think it was like $1,500 thereabouts in the fire department budget was not, didn't flow through. One item that came in after the fact that I would like you to act on tonight is we received the actuarial valuation for our OPEB fund. And we can shave about $45,000 off of the OPEB calculation. We had $145,000 in the budget. It's going to be closer to $100,000, the actual OPEB contribution in 1718. So I have the account number written down to make that motion. That's what those three items come out to. I think it's, I forget the exact, $199,000 difference. One of those. $150 was the medical insurance, the $45,000 of OPEB that came in after the fact, and the fire cuts that were not reflective in the bottom line of the budget. That's why it's not 1.53.
And do we not need to know where we stand with our union contracts? I've heard nothing since our last meeting.
Yeah, we're still back and forth on that.
It's bad enough we get no information in Hartford, but if you guys know something here, we should know that.
Yeah, no, there's been no movement.
So if you know the motor vehicle cap is in place, that basically limits you to option 1, 3, and 5. And then, I'm not sure if anybody's reading the tea leaves regarding teachers' retirement board contribution, what your thoughts are on that. And then the only other remaining variable is do you go with the initial governor's numbers or do you go to revise governor's numbers? So the law as it stands today, the cap is at 32 for motor vehicles. So again, that limits you to options 1, 3, and 5 in my options of six scenarios. I did, in the memo, I did speak to both our bond counsel and financial advisor regarding taking that extraordinary amount out of the fund balance. They both vehemently were opposed to it. Their comments basically centered on the fact that if you think about, say, in $2 or $3 million out of fund balance, A, you're going to violate your internal policy, which will result in a negative outlook from Moody's. To go back to Joe's question, it will not impact the current debt. Once the debt is issued, they cannot go back and reprice it and charge you more interest, however you will. Until you get that issue resolved, say roughly 10 years, you're going to have impacted on your borrowing at that point. So if you choose to borrow between now and 10 years from now, and you go out to get a Moody's review, and they see you violated your policies, it will have a negative impact on that point.
Now, the TRB contribution of 25%, that comes to about $1.5 million, correct?
At the original proposal, yes.
And it's only 10%, not 25%. It's 10%.
It's 10%?
Well, because the state does 30, so they're looking for the towns to do 10% of the 30 that they put in. So ours is roughly 1.4 million.
Now, you're saying if some legal authority says this is illegal, you're just saying it's a moot point because they'll cut deeper somewhere else, correct? I think you've been saying.
I've been, that's been my position, and, you know, just trying to balance a budget. You can't get it on this hand. You can't get it from Fran's budget. You can't get it from Kurt's budget. You got to get it from somewhere. So if they can't get teachers' retirement money, they'll get it.
The state's not going to say, oh, shucks, I guess we're not going to get that money.
We're done, exactly. They got to balance their budget. So the latest compromise, again, as I mentioned from CCM today, was they're going to take the retirement contribution and split it into the past service cost and normal cost, which is for active employees. And the latest proposal, we won't know, and the manager talked to Representative Candy Laura, may not know till August what the latest and greatest did.
This thing is legal. It really doesn't matter.
Correct, correct, in my mind, but so.
We're concerned it doesn't matter.
Correct. So again, the, I don't know where you want to go. 1, 3, 5, do you feel you want to go different than those? 5 is obviously the most aggressive, using the retirement numbers, using the. Five is obviously the most aggressive, using the retirement numbers, using the latest state numbers, using the mill rate cap, resulting in a thirty-six oh eight mill rate, which would be out of control.
No.
Number one-
Yes.
-constitutes-
Where we are, basically, today.
Where we are, and best reflects what we asked the voters to vote on in the referendum.
Right.
You are a hundred percent correct.
Okay. So with your adjusted numbers, the, number one is the original state numbers, no TRB, motor vehicle cap at thirty-two, which we were obligated to do-
Correct.
With a mill increase of one point three-six.
That is a hundred percent correct.
Thank you.
The downside that I discussed with both of those professionals I talked to, again, our bond counsel, financial advisor, is if we go out with that number, and the state passes their budget in August, and we're forced to go out with a new bill in September, an additional bill, the amount of, the cost is insignificant, it's about five thousand dollars, the amount of confusion that that would cause, and the amount of angst and issues they felt would be pretty significant.
The other side of it is, building it in could cause us to collect significantly greater taxes-
Correct.
-from members of the community, and we are told no refunds are possible.
Correct.
So we would be carrying that, those funds.
You are correct. You're right, it's a no-win situation.
That's not really acceptable.
So refunds aren't possible, but an additional tax bill is.
Yeah.
Would you just clarify for me, why are refunds not possible?
To process fourteen thousand refunds would be a nightmare.
To process fourteen thousand additional bills is not the same?
No.
So you're saying it's a nightmare, it's impossible on your end, or internally, if there's no regulation or law that says that you can't give a refund?
No.
You're just saying from your perspective-
Logistically, it'd be, it'd be, because then you're saying, basically, the second bill, you would make the adjustment to. Well, the bill goes out in June at XYZ mill rate, and now you're saying, okay, well, the second payment, it may say you a hundred dollars, but give us nineteen, we'll call it square, you know, kinda thing. It's, it's-
So where we had the question already, what would happen if we went with number three? So if we went with the two point eight-five increase? What does that do to our whole process?
Revised state numbers, which is probably likely, no TRB, again, which is likely to some extent, and the mill rate cap. Well, that was the question that I, you know, think is a Pat question, basically, can you do that? It alters what the taxpayer saw at the referendum.
Right.
But it's the latest information that we have as of today, and do we-
So here's my thoughts on this. I'm not comfortable with going with the low number, and I would have, you know, the state is in such a mess, they're gonna get the money somewhere. I'm not comfortable with going with the high number. But let's say we went with number three, and we'd take a lot of heat when the bills go out. Can we encumber that money, the additional money, that if it is lower, it all goes towards next year's budget, rather than everybody thinking, oh, we have a windfall in Town Hall, and we can spend everywhere?
Excellent point. I think it's the second page in my memo, there's, it's a revenue issue, so you're a hundred percent, it's not like at your house where if you get a bonus at work, you put a new roof on your house. It's a revenue surplus that would flow to the fund balance. So you're right, it's not a free-for-all spending, that if you guess high, and the state finds these billions of dollars, and everything gets made whole, it's not a free-for-all spending, it just flows back to fund balance, you're a hundred percent right on. If we increase the spending side-
So in all words, it would be in fund balance, and we could use it next year-
Most definitely.
-to deal with whatever the state does to us next year.
Right. Now, if we increased, if we did number five and increased the TRB payment, increased the expense line, and that didn't materialize, then you have fungible money that people can spend elsewhere. But because we're talking about the revenue side of the house, it's not money that can be spent elsewhere, it just flows back to fund balance. You're a hundred percent correct.
Michael, you can copy that.
So, it's everybody's pleasure.
But what's, what's the answer on the referendum question from?
What happens, Pat?
Pat.
Can we bill people more money than we went to referendum with?
Or manipulate a budget that they didn't vote on?
Correct.
I tend to think you can, but I would-
But we need to decide tonight.
That is correct.
I mean, you guys all see the news, too. If we went with number three and could avoid sending out an additional bill-
Correct. Which would be huge.
Yeah.
The confusion factor, people that have escrowed mortgages are gonna get one number, and the bill goes out, and then another month number.
Or the money goes back into fund balance. I mean, you know, nobody wants to raise taxes.
Well, the good thing is, as you're saying, we can hold it, and it can offset whatever happens next year.
And believe me, next year is not gonna be much better with them.
So that could really benefit us, you know, down the road, but, you know, the problem is, this is just, we're basing a budget all on speculation, man.
Correct.
There is no information, there is no tangible information at all. It's, how irresponsible is this? The position we're put in, I resent it. We can't rationalize it, I don't know what to do.
Yeah, you just gotta pick the lesser of two evils, really, and-
But they all have evils, though, they're all evil.
Either over or under, you're never, you're not gonna, you're not gonna pin it right on the nose, you're gonna be either over or under, and that's what you gotta figure out.
You have to be like the English, muddle through, that's all you have to do.
We have to do it, but the state doesn't have to do it?
You got it.
How about that?
I'm glad you want to-
Till August.
Or later.
Till August, or later.
It seems like they set their own deadline.
Right.
August is purely arbitrary, and it could, August could easily become September.
You are a hundred percent correct.
I see the practicality of Al's suggestion. It does make sense to avoid or minimize potential confusion from having to issue an additional bill. On the flip side, what I'm agonizing with is, we went to referendum projecting a budget increase of one point five-three mils, and we did not get the voter turnout to make that an official referendum. However, I can also see citizens saying, wait a minute.
Exactly.
Had you told us two point eight-five mils, you can be darn sure I would have been there to vote to tell you what to do with your budget.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
They can see there's a bait switch.
I agree with you a hundred percent, and all the comments are valid comments.
And we can also predict what they would have voted.
Sure.
I don't know that we really can, but I can see that argument, and frankly, if we had a Frank Baldow alive today, I could see him organizing a group to sue us-
Sure.
-because of that.
I mean, it's, either you educate people on the situation, and I think as Al mentioned, people see the news and know the state's in the toilet, they know that they're, you know, playing games with the revenue numbers, or you educate people who are sending a second tax bill out. Either way, it's gonna be a lot of education. How do you explain to the person that one point five-three became two point eight-five? Because we had to, right? That's a difficult explanation. Conversely, how do you explain to them, you got a tax bill in July, here's another bill in August, September, because the state played games with us? Both of them are really difficult explanation processes, that you're never gonna get everybody to understand.
What if we don't vote on it? I'm just saying, throwing it out there, what if we don't-
Or violate state law.
State law.
Yeah, the people that tell us what to do, they'll tell themselves what to do.
So what if we stay with the, the one, was it one point five-three, would we go to referendum?
Yeah, we can one point three-six, based on my revisions, sure.
But the question was the one point five-three. So can we set one at that? And then that way, there's a little more money in there if-
That's what I would-
Sure.
I mean, that's what we went to referendum with.
Yeah, it was a published number, yeah.
If we didn't have the referendum, we'd have latitude, but from what I understand, by having that referendum, we're archantied.
Well, it's an advisory referendum, and it's not binding unless you get the fifteen percent.
But again, those were the numbers that were published, that were thrown out to the public, so-
Right.
I feel obligated-
Public stayed home because they accepted the number.
Again, I feel obligated to at least abide by those numbers.
Those are our good faith numbers.
Right.
So you're almost destined to do a second bill, then?
Well, who knows?
I understand, but, which I don't like, but the fact is, we have a referendum-
I agree with you.
...which we promised the town a number.
It's a terrible position to be in, I fully disagree with you, and I wouldn't wanna be in those nine seats.
So what I'm saying is, we should go with the referendum number.
Okay.
We have any choice.
I think that's where we're at.
I wish there was a choice.
Because if you went with three or five, we would've had a cut more.
Yes.
Well, that's another option.
I-
We would've had cut more.
Potentially, I don't know.
We should be looking at that.
I mean, yeah, I mean-
I mean, yeah, right. You know, instead of going second tax bill.
So here's a question, so say in August, and say in August, we know where the state's at.
Yeah.
And it's the worst-case scenario.
Right.
In August, can we open up our budget and cut more?
That's a question with the-
We have to submit our budget to Hartford by July one, do we?
Correct. Yeah. But the question is, can you alter that after the fact? I, and I don't know the answer to that.
If our revenue drops from the state, we should be able to alternate it.
But then again, you know what, probably legally, I mean, they're telling us, right now, their numbers are the worst-case scenario.
Right, their numbers are the revised numbers, three, 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 six.
The state's not negotiating the teacher pension. You know, we're gambling on it.
Right.
The state's telling us it's fine.
First of all, these are not state numbers, this is Malloy's number, this is Malloy's budget. The legislature is sitting on their hands, they're not doing a damn thing.
Yeah, August, they're gonna do something, they said.
Well, they said maybe by August, there's no guarantee.
You can't bet on August at all.
Yeah.
They're too busy barking at each other, they're not doing a goddamn thing constructively.
So, yeah, to the, I don't, I don't think we can unless-
I think we have to look at our town.
Unless the legislature gives the towns the authority in this section, or the special section.
So Pat, do you have an opinion on that? Like, you know, so we go with a one-five-three now, and we do have a worst-case scenario in two or four months, whatever, can we then go back and cut?
So it looks like we're gonna go up a mil on the second, on the second bill.
Unless we go cut off of that.
Again, yeah, it's, it's all speculative, that's the problem, there's no, there's no right or wrong answers.
Just understand, when you're talking about cutting, you're going from one point five-three mils to two point eight-five, that's a mil and a quarter, roughly, in the math. So you're talking about a million and a half dollars we've gotta cut to balance that budget.
Right.
And we cut that budget to the bone.
Right.
So we're gonna find a million and a half dollars, we're gonna have police officers without bullets in their guns, we're gonna have police cars without tires on them.
Well, you're gonna have layoffs.
Yeah, you're gonna have layoffs.
Government's doing the same thing, laid off state troopers.
It's the times we live in.
All right. So if we'd go with the one point five-three that we, that we had planned, that would put the mill rate at thirty-three point five-one, is that correct?
Yes. So in that motion on the second page, if you want to just plug in that, thirty-three point five-one, then we'll proceed on that pass.
Make motion.
So I'm gonna make that motion, and give us an opportunity to discuss on the basis of that. Be it hereby resolved, the North Branford Town Council hereby sets the mill rate for the 2017-18 fiscal year at thirty-three point five-one mils, and further authorizes Michael Paul as town manager to sign the rate book for the collection of taxes on July first, 2017, and January first, 2018. I'll second it.
Yeah, one more question, we may have already asked this, and you may have already told us. Is it possible to amend the bill of January one, 2018, the second half? Because it's all one bill.
Goes out on that first bill, huh?
Yeah.
Just to make sure, when you talk to people, that plant that seed, that the potential for a second bill may be coming, so the mortgage case, we get out.
We've been saying if they have a month's-
I know, I know, I know.
Reiterate.
Do, do we need, or should we, can we put anything in this motion to address that possibility?
Can we put something in the bill that goes out July one, saying-
Well, I definitely think there has to be an explanation. I've seen other towns' tax bills, and things that are sent with it as far as-
Information.
Informational, like, this is, you know, what, if we didn't get from the state, the EDC, you know, the educational ECS money, the tax rate would have been this, blah, blah, blah. I think we need to come up with something that goes in our tax bill, explaining the-
Unfortunately, probably fully seventy-five or eighty percent of the homeowners in town never see a bill.
Right.
Well, true, because it goes, but I think there also needs to be just more education, you know, something has to go in the Tot Tuck at Times, the Sun.
We've gotta put it in with the car bill, which definitely goes to people.
Correct.
But a home mortgage bill, a home-
Real estate.
Real estate tax bills largely go to, electronically go to the mortgage holders.
Correct. And quite honestly, a lot of the cars in town are leased, surprise number that are leased, that go to Volkswagen leasing and Ford Motor Credit and stuff.
Tot Tuck at Times and on the website.
To those bills, we, put it in every car tax bill.
We will.
I don't care where it goes.
The current bill, we are redoing the bill, and that language you're talking about, is that statutory required to have, you know, if you don't get X amount of T D. On the back of the bill this year, we're going, we're making it a lot more detailed. Again, will anybody read it? Probably not.
I think it needs to be a separate, a separate insert with the tax bill.
Correct.
Not on the back.
Color paper, kinda so it sticks out, glow-in-the-dark yellow, something like that.
We can also do an information phone call, phone back also, right? It's the same, be aware, it's coming.
Right, yeah, we could do a reverse nine-one-one, sure.
Or we could also, I think, rather than just an article in the Tot Tuck at Times, if you did an insert, because it's separate, people tend to, you know, you see that come out, if it's colored paper, something, an insert, I know you pay a little bit for the insert-
Sure.
-to go in there, but I just think that is also more effective than an article on page six.
Sure, valid point, yeah, no, valid point.
Hand something out to every person that borrows things from the library.
Well, you can put notices, you can put big notices in the libraries, in Town Hall, in public places.
And their books says they're taking them out. There's thousands of people that borrow.
Sure, Bob, by the time those notices come out, you're gone. You don't care.
You caught me on that one.
So do we, do we put something in this motion, or just leave the motion as is? Do we leave it?
I would say, because it's speculative still, we don't know, I mean, it may not happen, right? There may not be the need for a second bill, if all of a sudden the skies open up and millions of dollars fall out, and Hartford finds money, you know, but who knows?
So we can, we can also, when we do eventually, if something miraculous happens, get, you know, have numbers from Hartford, then we can have a-
Right.
-letter, we can do all that stuff when we actually know what's going on.
But I think, to go back to your point, because you're mentioning the rate book and the signing, it might be prudent to put a sentence at the end saying, the possibility exists of a second bill-
Due, due to the budget not being settled at the state level.
Uncertainty, exactly. Uh, and the timing wouldn't be July and January. In that case, it would be, I don't, I don't know. Could be, I don't know. It's hard to say what it's gonna be, but maybe a second bill.
Probably October.
Could be. That, that falls into sewer one. It's just, it's a nightmare. It's a nightmare. But, yeah, if you wanna, you know, amend the motion, Mr. Miller.
And how would, what do you want us to amend it, to read?
Uh.
How do you, how do you change from be it hereby resolved to, but something else could happen in the future?
That's right.
Due to uncertainty.
Yeah, maybe at, at the last line, you know, due to the, due to the, uh, uncertainty of the state aid at the time of passage, the potential exists for a additional tax bill to be issued to all taxpayers once final numbers from the state are, are known.
Yeah, that.
That's good.
Yeah.
Did you get that, Michelle?
No. Due to the uncertainty of state aid at the time of passage.
Yeah, du- due to the uncertainty of state aid at the time of the budget passage, the potential exists for an additional tax bill to be issued once final numbers from the state are known.
Al, you'll second that amendment?
Yes, I, I second that amendment. I don't have to say it.
Gotta hear a lot of groans.
Okay, and now. I have to put that, Mr.?
Mr. Counselor.
Counselor Miller, approve.
Amended it.
Amended.
Approve, the amended, okay.
And Counselor Rose.
Okay.
And we'll do a roll call.
Okay. Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fornin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
No.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
And Counselor Rose?
Yes. Hey, Anthony, before we get off this,
Yes.
so in the worst case scenario,
Yes.
including our debt service reduction, how many million did the state take away from us this year? We're in the fours?
Roughly, uh, closer to six.
Closer to six.
We were around.
Because we were quiet and had debt reduction, Channel Eight News is in Groton with their five million dollar hit, instead of here with our six million dollar hit.
We are in a nineish neighborhood combined. We're down on a threeish neighborhood combined.
Okay.
Well, if, again, worst case scenario, if everything comes to be.
I want to hear.
Right.
And hopefully, we don't see that, but.
Okay, next is suspense transfers. There's a motion on that?
Yeah, last time, when, uh, Ken and Dave, last month, I mean, there was no formal motion for you guys to vote on. So we went back, we were reviewing it, and we're just kinda formalizing with a motion. Same topic they discussed last month. There was no motion in your pocket.
Everything, I thought.
It's the same information, everything else.
Yeah.
It's just no motion.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So be it hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council accepts recommendations of the tax collector and agrees to put the following taxpayers uh, on the list. Onto the suspense list pursuant to CGS twelve dash one six five.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fornin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Next item is, uh, tax abatements.
Same situation. It was discussed last month that there was no motion for you to vote on.
Be it hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council accepts the recommendations of the town assessor to reduce the assessed value to zero per certificate of correction for the attached, um, six properties on the list.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fornin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Next item is new business, discussion in action, and review of approved job descriptions on various positions. First is the library director revised.
Yeah, we have a few here, starting with library. As you know, Bob is retiring September first, and, um, it's been, will be forty-one years of service. And, uh, that, as you know, means that job description hasn't been touched in quite a while, so. Uh, Bob and I sat down, there were just a few tweaks, um, on page, uh, the second page. Um, just updating and tweaking that, and just looking for your approval on that.
And Bob has obviously reviewed this.
Yes.
And helped formulate it.
So in light of our budget situation, what happens if we drag our feet on this and, uh, don't look to hire somebody till January?
Mr. Hall, what would be the, of that, on the libraries?
When you're sick, what happens?
I don't get sick.
All right, so, so when you're on vacation, what happens? They struggle.
Yeah, well, in, in a town of like this, um, in a library system like ours, the, um, the library director is directly out there with the people a lot.
Mm-hmm.
So you go on vacation, and yeah, things keep going for a couple of weeks. If you say, let's not have a library director for a few months, or even longer than that, then you have to start making cutbacks in what the library does. Because the director in a town like this is not sitting up in an ivory tower, pointing his finger, telling people what to do. He or she is down there in the trenches with the staff. Anybody that come in the library, you're liable to see me right there. Um, so it would have a, a major impact on the library service, uh, directly on the library service. So, you know, you, you could, you could point to any department and say, what happens if we take away the department head? You know, what happens if there's no franny in public works? You know, it, it's, it would have a huge effect.
Which our budget is gonna have on us.
Yeah.
I mean, we may be closing the libraries a year from now.
I, um, I, I, I look at what's happening with the state and with the town, and I can see all kinds of terrible scenarios, um, not just for the library, but for, yeah, it's, it's a tough situation.
Bob, in your opinion, how long would you suggest in a worst case scenario? If we put off to fill that position, a month, two months, I mean?
You're.
It's a ballpark.
You're asking me almost an impossible question for me to answer. Um, you're saying to me, you've done a job for forty-one years. What would it be like if we didn't have? Are, are you, are you, have you been necessary for this forty-one years, or are you just kind of an extra?
You know what, and I don't, you know, I don't intend to, you know, we have nothing but respect for you.
Would, would the, would the library, could the library survive until January? Yeah, they might have to cut some hours back or something like that.
I understand there's two libraries instead of one, which means it's, it's a more difficult.
Um, the, the two libraries doesn't add to the expense. It adds to the complications of a library director's job, yes. Um, it, it makes things, it, it adds challenges to a director's job. You could take any department and say, let's, let's knock off a key position for a while, and would they survive? Well, yeah, they, they, they would do their best to survive.
But not only that, I mean.
We run a long time without a town manager.
You're losing a full-time position, too.
Yeah.
In, in a, in a light-staffed system.
Yeah. That's, that's what I'm saying. The, the direct, the director is not a distant executive in this. The director is one of the people that's out there doing stuff.
Well, the hope was that we would have some overlap as well. So that, uh,
Yeah, somebody's got.
get someone on board prior to your leaving, so the transition would be less, uh,
Well, what, what you're asking me about is not filling the director's position.
Now, that's what Counselor Rose was asking about.
And it's not you. It's anybody, if anybody's retiring, that's what we're gonna be looking at. It's not you.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's difficult for the person themselves to answer the question of, well, how important are you, you know?
That's not it.
You're very. And that's, yeah, that's not the intent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I have a question on this thing, Michael. Um, where's the pay scale?
It's usually not in a job description.
Not for, yeah.
Okay, but so what are we approving? So he was here for forty-one years, did a great job. He was at the top of the pay scale.
Just a couple of.
I would wanna hire somebody for less money than him.
Right, this, this is, that would, that would be when we discuss publishing an ad, I would assume.
Yeah, we should, bad, right. And we, and we did, we have, we've been out to, um, start that process.
And he's got the lousiest pension available?
He's got the. Yeah.
No, I mean, we wanna make sure that, you know, I mean, that ship sailed.
I mean, the new person.
Right, so the new person, we need to make sure they come in on the lousiest pension available with the lousiest healthcare.
They'll have.
That's where we are in Connecticut.
It's just the lousiest.
You know what, if you people are.
We may not wanna put it quite that way.
So, uh, what I'm saying, Michael, I think we need to have a discussion about this. Maybe that's executive session stuff, I don't know, but I think that we don't wanna just go ahead there. You know, folks, look what we're trying to do here tonight. Next year's no better in the state budget.
Well, the motion is just to prove.
This is on the job description.
Yeah, it's just the language for the job.
Right, but he's looking for permission to advertise this. So when are we gonna answer all of these questions? Right? You said you wanted to get this advertised.
We, we have, in order to, in order to get out.
Have you already advertised?
Already advertised out. There hasn't been, obviously, nobody's, we haven't closed it, and then we're not hiring anybody, but, um, the, the emphasis is.
So all I'm saying is, we need to have a discussion.
Right.
About the salary, the benefits.
It's a salary.
If there's stuff we can change, maybe we need to. That's all I'm saying.
But we gotta, yeah. Did you already advertise the salary?
There's a range. There's a range.
There's a range, yeah.
Yeah, there's a range. Yeah, every job has a range.
We already advertised what before we approved the language?
It's no different than the E D C position. That's been advertised, and we haven't even approved a job description, so.
There's a lot, lot, lot building up.
Just, just thought I'd throw it out there, but that's on the agenda, too.
We're just here to set the imaginary mill rate.
Sour grapes over here.
The job description for a library director did exist, and, and it was basically a sound one. There wasn't anything in there, Mark, Mike, that was you just, you had a. that was inaccurate or bad or terribly out, you know, it was, it was well-written to start with, so there was, there was, there is an official job description with just some minor revisions that we talked about.
Computers.
Oh, well, they were already there, believe it or not.
Forty-one years ago, did we have computers?
The, the job description was written in nineteen seventy-nine, I believe. Because that was the year that the town took over the library as a town partner. And, um, there were already computers in the library.
Oh, look at that.
Yeah, imagine that.
Thanks, Bob.
So we should approve the language, right?
Right.
Okay. The North Branford Town Council hereby approves the revised job description for the library director.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fornin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
He stepped out.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes. Before we get off this, Michael, now, now, you know what, that mill rate just sent me over the top. Did, do we or do we not have a hiring freeze in place?
We do.
Did you ask us whether we were gonna replace him? And would we, you know, sort of reprieve on the hiring freeze so that you could hire somebody?
Not yet. I haven't.
Oh, not yet. So I guess we are just here to set imaginary mill rates. And everything else in the charter and everything else that we do doesn't count anymore.
No, it's getting preparation
Yeah, okay.
in place and getting ready, but if the council decides they don't want a library director, Bob, they want a, a.
That's neither here nor there. What's, you know, there is, you know, there's policies that are set by this council. And they don't seem to be being followed. But. Yeah, it doesn't matter. I mean, absolutely, we were gonna approve a, you hire a guy. But there's no sense in us sitting here if you aren't gonna ask when there's an ord, when there's a hiring freeze put in place by this council. Um, you thought once that it was the last council that put it in. The town attorney informed you that this council would have to vote against what the last council did, or else it just still stays, and I, I don't know, but it's getting late, and the later it gets, the more pissed off I'm gonna be, so we better keep moving.
Next is the E D C grant writer, new position.
Move the table. Good plan.
Well, the problem that I have right now is, this is also a position that has been advertised, and people have applied for.
Okay, we're not doing anything.
Get the hell out of here.
Is that the case?
Right, E D C, it, that's out there, and the library position and secretary for rec department.
Do we have language?
You have, you have language in, in front of you.
But wait, whoa, right. Okay.
We have, we have language here. I suggest that we adopt the language for the job description.
That's already listed.
Whether or not we fill the position is the next decision we make.
Right. I have a motto, don't surround yourself with a group of idiots.
Oh, that was nice.
Well, he did say, as in, I wanna.
I'm just getting more and more angry. Well, I, I, I don't know where he gets his thing from, because these were approved in, in our budget.
Well, that doesn't, yeah, I, I know the position was approved in the budget. We haven't, we, we did not set, we just set the mill rate, but given the fact that we are all in a quandary, not knowing what the state is going to do.
Hey, Anthony, lights are on in your truck.
Ah.
This would be one position that I would not fill until we know what is going on with our mill rate. Uh, I, I, we can approve the language for the job description. I have no problem with that. But moving any further than that, until we know if our mill rate is going to be one five three increase, or one five one, or two point eight five, or four point one.
I frankly think it's, it's appropriate that we put on a hard hiring freeze. The one that's gonna be difficult is the corner potato festival.
Well, that's not funded through our budget.
And that position's already been filled.
With the rest of the money.
Were the remaining, were the remaining funds that were not used by the.
And it's not part of our mill rate.
No, position was filled?
Yes.
Then let's adopt the language. If the verbiage seems appropriate, why don't we vote on that? But in terms of actually offering positions that are town-funded, I frankly think Al is correct. We may simply not have the money for operations as normal, and we shouldn't make that commitment until we know what Hartford is doing.
I totally agree. I mean, I.
I don't, I don't think we need to.
But I, I also have some questions about this job description. If it says slash grant writer, does that mean, it's not clear in here. For example, is this person also gonna look for grants for equipment? I mean, it's not clearly stated in here. I, I have a problem with the description as it is. I, I think that it should be more clarified in terms of things like, for example, like the police were looking for, say, cameras. It, it isn't clear in here that that grant writer is gonna do that kind of thing. So I would like to see more in this particular job description in clarifying the fact that this is also a grant writer.
Well, we can put the motion on the floor and then discuss, I mean, that's a perfect, yeah.
He withdrew it, so I was.
Oh.
I'm moving to table it.
All right, so we'll table it.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you could vote on tabling it or.
Should we get some more language on it?
Well, but we can't, we can't, we won't get more language until we discuss it.
Okay.
Okay, that's, well.
So we can table it and not discuss it and not change it, and then when we're ready to, or we can put it on the floor.
Where's the, where's the motion on what page?
It's on page eighty.
Okay. The North Branford, the North Branford Town Council hereby approves the job description for the economic development coordinator slash grant writer.
So you gotta second it, and then we can discuss it. Or not gonna second it, not discuss it.
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Now discussion?
Right.
Um, Marie?
No, I would say that I think, I would like to see it clarified in the terms of the fact that it says slash grant writer, that it's not just economic development, that it also includes writing grants for other things that various departments could get. I don't think that's clear here.
Tom Y.
Tom Y. I don't think that's clear in this job description.
But it, 'cause I remember the police chief telling me that.
Well, we're talking, right, we're talking about cameras.
Well, it just left it, left it broad. Responsibilities and duties.
Responsibilities, it was just left broad. It wasn't specific to just police or naming anybody.
It just says works with various departments on the preparation, completion, and administration of grants, attends planning and other meetings necessary to become familiar with projects considered for grant funding and community means deemed necessary by supervisor for monitor, monitoring or other purposes. So, it's, it does say that they're working with other departments, not just EDC.
Right, I wrote it as broad as I could without naming individual departments.
I guess when I read it, it, that didn't hit me that way, but.
So, if you want, if you feel there needs to be more clarification, I guess that would be the place that we would add it in there. Um.
What do we need for a quorum?
Should we get a quorum? All right, roll call.
Are you okay with that, Marie, in that section?
I'll, I'll, I'll accept that, but.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
I'll say yes, with a clarification.
Thank you.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
That's all there is. And now we'll move on to the Potato and Corn Festival Coordinator, new position.
Well, this really isn't a new position, because we've had it for a couple of years.
With new job description, what do we call it?
I don't, I don't know, because we, we.
Not really new position.
Position's been there, it's just not, you just haven't seen a formal.
We've never had a job description?
Right.
So, the job description is new, the position is not new.
New job description.
But the position is filled?
Yes, it was.
Well, we, right. Roseanne left and, um, Pat Russer came back.
Who was the old, he's the one that left. He, he was here for a year.
Under Pam.
As the recreation supervisor and left. And now he is filling the role of the coordinator with the remaining salary that was left, which was approximately fifteen thousand dollars out of the.
How was this done when the Park and Rec did not meet?
It's only a temporary situation.
It's, it's a part-time, it's a, yeah, it's a.
I think he's filling it permanently.
Right, he's, I think he's.
It's an interim type of.
He's doing it right now to get through for this festival. But I don't think it's, you know, it'll be an annual renewal type thing.
Yeah, I mean.
When, when does it end?
When this festival ends. When this year's festival.
So, this ends on August fifth?
Well, fourth, fifth, and sixth is the festival.
It ends on August sixth?
Yeah.
Well, he, if he's here for the wrap-up part of it, you know, but.
There's gotta be some cleanup.
I mean, yeah, but.
Some account.
You know, I, I may be wrong, and I, I could easily be. But I don't know that we've ever gotten final numbers from last year.
Well, actually, they were, I brought that up at the Poco Fest meeting tonight that was at six o'clock, because I, and I asked if that committee had seen those numbers. And Lauren was going to give them to the commission at last month's meeting. That didn't happen, because they didn't have a quorum. And I just felt that it was wrong that the committee, all of these people that have worked on it, they're almost, you're two months away from the next one, and they still haven't seen the numbers from last year.
Nor has council.
Well, we had the preliminary. We at least had the benefit more so than what the committee did. And the commission had seen the preliminary too. No, they haven't seen the final. So, she is going to send out by email tomorrow to the committee, because who knows if the commission's gonna meet at the end of June? I mean, if they don't have a quorum, they don't meet. So.
How, how does that clarify this issue for this year?
It doesn't. You asked the question about the numbers from last year, and that's.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm saying, because of that, are, are we even reasonably handling the Poco Festival for this year? With, with a person whose funding ends on August sixth?
Well, again, this person is just.
Well, it doesn't, it, it's just a set salary. It's not, the funding doesn't, I, I mean, it's, they have X number of hours.
Who's gonna be responsible for, uh, for the, this cleanup?
Ultimately Lauren, as the director of Park and Rec.
Well, I, it depends on when that money for his salary runs out. I mean, it may run out a month. It may run out in September or October, or it could.
It depends on how many hours he has.
Right, it depends on how many hours he has in. So, you know, that being said, it could, and it could, he may not be obligated to stay on the eighth, or it could be a month, you know. I mean, it depends on when that money runs out.
If he wraps it up quicker, it's quicker.
Right.
Well, it wasn't, it hasn't been wrapped up for, uh, ten months?
No, he's not responsible for the, the accounting end of it. He's responsible for the logistics, for making sure everything, all the volunteers are taken care of. He's responsible for the festival itself, not the accounting.
You know, to, to some extent, a pause being cast over everything we're trying to do here by the state of the state budget. We really need to focus on what is on our agenda to do. And it's not an agenda item to determine whether or not this individual is interim or long-term, whether he will be hired or not. We're adopting a job description. And we really ought to focus on doing that. And if we need to discuss these other items, such as whether or not the person will be hired permanently, whether or not he will do the follow-up after the festival, that's probably something for another agenda and another time. Or we're never gonna get through tonight's agenda.
Wow, it's nine thirty already. So, we, we made the motion, right?
We did. Motion, seconded.
Second, okay.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Next item is Labor One, new position.
All right, Franny, after all this discussion, I guess we're up to you now.
He didn't wanna surround himself by idiots. He didn't specify who the idiots were.
Right.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion, right? We're disapproving the language. So, the North Branford.
Well, I think before we do that, I would just like an explanation of what's happening here, because there's a, there's a number of.
The difference between this one and the last.
Well, there's, there's a little, this is the thing we had talked about. This is just a reorganization. I'm not, I haven't asked to hire anybody yet.
Right, so.
Tonight would not be the night.
You're prepping.
I still haven't had a reunion yet, because we're far away.
So, you're just, this is, you're taking the steps, and this is step number one.
So, so, Labor One, Labor One, Labor Two, Labor One is the lobean and the quote-unquote, Labor Two is the higher one, that we all have now. So, Labor One is the one, we talked about the one lower.
Cutting the lawns.
Entry level in play.
Correct. So, that's, that's Labor One, Labor Two.
Would stay as is.
Is the way it is now, except you're gonna go up, up, higher level, the highway, eventually. And there'll be a little work back and forth. It's a general labor's job. Then you have, um.
So, we're not adding any new positions. We are simply dividing up.
We're not adding anything. Now, we're adding job descriptions.
We're, we're dividing up job descriptions for authorized bodies.
We're putting steps in.
We're putting steps in. There are, later on in life, you know, there's positions, but we're, we're not requesting at this point. We're just setting the stage.
I understand. I just wanna make, uh, make sure it's all clarified.
Um, that's Labor Two, which Labor Two is, there's, I don't think there's any changes in Labor Two.
Already passed the labor.
It's the same, it's the same one that's always been there. We just put it in order that way, that's all. So, then there's a Highway One, which is a lower highway employee than the highway. So, Labor One is the lower guy, and Labor Highway Two is the upper. So, there's salary change in, in that also. The groundskeeper was always in there. I just did a little bit of cleanup on the language, very minor stuff, licenses and stuff like that. I think that was it.
What's labor and trades, the classification plan?
That, that's the, uh, that's the salary ranges, I think.
Oh, okay.
Just 'cause you're changing Labor One.
That's not, that's not job descriptions, okay.
That's how they lay in the salary ranges.
Okay.
So, but you have to approve that also.
Right, as to where they go.
Not so much as a salary, but it's just that they were in a range.
Right.
You're just changing the titles, or adding a title.
That's what, that's what, yeah. That, that'll be when we approve the job description for the specific.
After we approve all the job descriptions, then it's where they're classified.
Correct.
Okay.
The North Branford Town Council hereby approves the job description for the Labor One and Labor Two position in the Public Works Department.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
And next is Highway One and Highway Two.
The North Branford Town Council hereby approves the job descriptions for the Highway One and Highway Two positions in the Department of Public Works.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yeah.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
And next item is groundskeeper revised.
The North Branford Town Council hereby approves the revised job description for groundskeeper position in the Public Works Department.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
And next item is classification plan, labor and trades position revised.
The North Branford Town Council hereby approves the revised title changes to the classification plan for labor and trades positions.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Next item is review of lease renewal with Totoka Historical Society Reynolds Beers House.
Now, this is, um, coming up this year to be renewed. It would've been later in the year, but, um, hoping to push this up a little bit, uh, and put it on the July first of, uh, for a triggering date, um, renewing another twenty years with the Reynolds Beers House. So, I had Pat take a look at it and revise it a little bit. We had to bump up the insurance, um, lines in terms of getting a minimum, uh, threshold of, uh, a million dollars for the policy, uh, and some other housekeeping issues in respect to duties and responsibilities inside and outside the house. Uh, but essentially, it's the same, same lease that, uh, was prepared twenty years ago, uh, and looking to put that in place.
Can I just ask a question? Facing the uncertainties we're looking at right now, why would, and I know we did it in the past, but why would we want, going forward, to commit to a twenty-year lease, when it's entirely conceivable we don't, we're not in a position, a couple of years from now, to continue to fund what really is a very important part of the history of this town, but not a critical one?
I think there's an escape clause, though, isn't there? Either party can cancel after.
Yeah.
That's my recollection. After how many, thirty days' notice or something?
I need an escape clause.
Huh?
Well, you take the one Al took.
Your lights are on.
Have to, have to call where that is. Nine months, that would be.
Nine months you can get out. Joe?
But, yeah, your point, I, I don't, you know, don't have a crystal ball. I don't know the long-term viability, but it seems like this is a, a, an important historical, I mean, that, that's a council decision policy. If you wanna go out twenty years, we can rewrite it to.
The lease shall be terminable at will by either party, provided nine months' notice in writing, in writing is given prior to the termination of the lease. So, we gotta give them nine months' notice if we decided it's falling down, we can't maintain it anymore, and it's gotta be put under Mark and Sol's at home again, we could terminate the lease.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No, it's a good point. I mean, yeah, it's a good point.
Did we make a motion, or did I sidetrack?
You sidetracked us.
All right. In view of the fact that I caused a disruption, I'm going to move that the North Branford Town Council hereby approves a successor lease with the Totoka Historical Society for the use of the Reynolds Beers House for twenty years, subject to the right of termination, just quoted, beginning July one, twenty seventeen.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Our next item is library expenditures from the trust and gifts, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen.
Right, you have, I think you have an explanation there, uh, that Bob had, uh, put together in, in terms of the history and the function of those high items with the suggested motion.
Be hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council authorizes the expenditure of up to eleven thousand dollars from the general gift fund, Flaherty, Friends of the Library, and other gift funds in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen pursuant to the proposal from the library board. These expenditures will be for the library collections, programs, and equipment.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Uh, yeah.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Abstain.
Next item, citizen statements and petition.
Tom Zane panel, twenty-nine, last of it way. I just wanna just, um, make a comment of what I just witnessed. Um, and, you know, we just talked about the budget, and, you know, and, and the uncertainty of it is in, um, you know, where the state is. And, you know, we had the low, the middle, the high. And it was also, it went through the, around the, the tables of the council members that, um, you know, a new, uh, uh, put out a new bill, a refund, whatever it may be. And one comment was made about, um, cuts. And it was totally, um, you know, not, not even discussed. What, like, like that was, was, was dead, dead on arrival. And, and don't get me wrong, I don't, I, I, I mean, that's, that's the worst-case scenario, but that's gotta be considered, because, um, we're pricing ourselves out of the market. You know, we're already gonna be up the highest one in the neighborhood with mill rate. And, you know, people that have made comments, uh, at our public hearing for the budget, made comments, the ones, uh, the only ones that got up were all talking about, we want our budget because we want the Board of Education, um, to make our school systems better, so that we keep our property values up. I mentioned the last time I spoke, with our mill rates going up, our property values are, are not gonna stay up. They're not gonna go up. They're gonna go down. So, it's, again, counterproductive. So, it's gotta be considered.
I, I think you, you may be mistaken in your perception of what the council's reaction was. The, the truth of the statement is so apparent that it didn't really need debate. We absolutely would intend to consider additional cuts if it comes to pass that we are confronted with the kind of cuts Hartford is.
Okay, and that's fair enough, but I'm just saying what I observed, what was said. It was said.
Don't read into the absence of a debate.
Okay.
There's nothing to do with that one.
Okay. And, um, you know, then I just listened to about the Potato and Corn Festival. We don't have the numbers. Well, the numbers, there, there should be a deadline for the numbers. We need to know the numbers. And, you know, it's, I mean, we all know that. I mean, I, I'm not, I, I'm just a concerned citizen. That's, that's all.
We, we did get numbers. We did get preliminary numbers months ago. Um, some of the bills were not in, so they didn't rule it as a final number. But the numbers that we were given, they felt that it wasn't gonna be that far off from what they were expecting.
Okay.
So, we did get some preliminary numbers. So we did get some preliminary numbers.
Yeah.
The committee and the commission just did not get the final numbers. And that was asked for at the last council meeting from the Town Finance Director, and he did get them to Lauren at Park and Rec.
Okay. I mean, those are just...
And then to add is that, you know, the Potato Festival is funded separately from the town. The town doesn't, doesn't fund that festival, so, you know, we're not, we're not budgeting for that.
So that doesn't cost the town?
No.
No.
Does not come out of the general fund. They raise their own money.
Okay.
From what they get at the gate, from what they get from concessions.
Right.
And expenses are paid for.
Your separate fund.
Right.
So the Potato...
So then why would we be concerned about the numbers?
We just wanna make sure they balance.
Okay.
You know, because they have a separate fund.
Yeah.
So, and that, and from that fund, they will pay for things. They will upgrade that facility. You know, they, they might have to do some more electrical work there, but that all comes out of their fund. They give out scholarships. That all comes out of that fund. It's not out of the town's operating.
Okay, fair enough. I mean, that, that clarifies it for me, but, you know, I was just listening, just listening, so I started making some notes and, you know... You know, and, oh, thank you.
And the motion on the table was for the language for the person that's running the festival.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely got that. Thank you.
Cliff, Potato Club, fifty-one Middletown Avenue. Also clarifying the Paco Fest or Potato Fest, having been a volunteer for many years, I think there's a lot of misconception about what goes on there. It's a hard job. You already have to start thinking two thousand eighteen now, because, and Lauren, God bless her, I don't know how she has not a nervous breakdown.
Yeah, I second that.
Coordination, you have to start lining up your amusements, your vendors, coordinating calendar dates almost a year ahead of time. And then you have to keep after these people. It's not a part, it's, it's a full part-time job. I don't know how else to describe it. A thankless job, a very harassing job. Thank God somebody wants to do it, because I sure as hell don't. And, I mean, I go to the meetings. Luckily, I'm only responsible for the tractors pulls and the hayrides, and, and that's a lot, but it's a lot less, it's pretty, I have good people that work with me, and we have the same people that support us. But there's so much uncertainty that goes on there. And again, they are self-sufficient, but you, people are people, and Hank can tell you, well, Hank left, but people send in their measurements for their vendor setup, they forget to include the hitch. Hank will be setting up the, he'll be meeting these vendors, all of a sudden, well, wait a minute, buddy, your ridge too big. You forgot about, well, you wanted to know the size of it. I gave you the square footage of the box part, you know, and just, that's one small issue of many, many. I sure hope that people understand it's not about the money. It's about one good weekend a year of citizens enjoying each other's company. Let's get off the harassing people about it. Let's just embrace it. If it's a cash cow and it bothers you, then discontinue it. It's a lot of work for volunteers like me, but at the end, it's a labor of love because, you know, you get to see happy kids, and, and the guys are having fun pulling their tractors and stuff. So, but it's a lot of hard work, and it takes a year of coordination. And Lauren, right now, has had so much interruption in her operation. I mean, because I believe this gentleman's leaving in June to go to England. She has a coordinator. Boom, he's gone. So, I mean, there won't, it's hard to keep this continuity going. And not, you just can't slide into that job. And if you don't work the Potato Fest as a volunteer, you're not gonna, you're gonna be so lost if you go into that job. So again, I wanna speak in favor of how it's done, and, and just, we gotta support Lauren any way we can. I mean, she just gives her all, and there's not much more she can give. On the second note, you guys are doing a fantastic job. I feel your pain. You are, I mean, I, I don't think any of you should feel guilty about any decision you make. You were, you worked hard to get to a budget point. And then, you know, with, it's like looking at your checkbook, and it's written in invisible ink. Well, I just had all this, well, where'd this go? I mean, constantly changing figures. You should be proud of what you're doing. I, I understand you feel it pained at the citizens, but at the citizens, where are they? I mean, I get so upset. They'll bitch and moan on Facebook. Lots of seats here. If you don't like crowds, you can sit right there. If they're not gonna come to meetings, and they're not gonna go online and do stuff, I mean, the right way, then you can't help them. If they're not here, and if they don't wanna come and speak public comments, you have to try to guess what they're gonna want from you, and you've done an excellent job tonight. And the third comment I have, I don't know if you still wanna address the situation I have with two less members. If you do, fine. I really just need you to protect my interest in my home and my septic system. And, you know, if you have, if you don't feel you can do it tonight, put it off another month with two less people. But I, I really, I'm, I'm really just sick of being flooded out. Enough is enough, and I'm not asking for a lot.
Twenty years.
Huh?
I'm sorry you've dealt with it for so...
Well, I've been patient, because I've waited for the system to work. Well, guess what? It didn't work. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
No.
Executive session.
And we need to know, we should address Cliff's request, whether or not we can include the citizen. I don't know the answer to that. I don't think so.
Well, I think you can invite anybody to executive session. We can invite Donald Trump.
I think the council should...
I would rather not.
Yeah, I think we should put him on.
Okay, so it's executive session to include the town attorney, the town manager. Is that it? Franny and Kurt. Did you hear that? You're making the motion, right?
Yes. So I'm making, making a move to, move to executive session to include Franny, Kurt.
Town manager.
Town attorney, town manager.
Second.